We're now recording.
Okay, very good. I'll call the meeting order. This is the December 8, 2020, meeting, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. If I could just ask if anyone is not talking to mute their lines. We limit the feedback from here. We have a rather lengthy agenda. I see we have a number of people who have are attending the meeting from the public. For I'm sure some of the compliance, old business, and the public hearing. For those people who don't know, we'll go to the executive agenda first, and then we go to the public hearing item. The applicant will make their presentation, and then members of the public will be heard, and then the applicant has a rebuttal. With this new format, members of the public who should be heard to sign up, we'll go over this a little bit more when we get there. But I just wanted to let people know of how things are going to roll out. All right, so the first item on our agenda, well, I'm sorry. We have Commissioner Braun is presently not here. She's going to be linked. And so we have Commissioner Di Giacomo sitting in for Commissioner Braun. And Commissioner Di Giacomo, you were present at last November 10.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry about that. I was not at that meeting, but I did watch online.
You did watch the video. Okay, great. So you're up to speed. All right, good. So Commissioner Di Giacomo is going to be sitting for Commissioner Braun. So the first item on our agenda is meeting minutes from November 10, 2020. Can I have a motion? So moved by Commissioner Corcoran. To adopt the minutes. And seconded by Commissioner Noonan. Any comments, Commissioner Corcoran? Correction.
I didn't see any problems.
Commissioner Noonan?
I'm for me.
Any other members of the commission have any questions or comments on minutes? Okay, all those in favor say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The minutes from November are adopted unanimously. Next item on our agenda is our organizational meeting. Happens once a year. We do our election of officers and the schedule of meetings. So the first is the election of officers. We have three to fill, the chair, vice chair, and the secretary. And the floor is open. I'll take nominations for the chairman. Commissioner Francis?
I would like to nominate Matt Wagner.
Thank you very much. And I see Commissioner Berman with your hand up. You
I second the nomination.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the vote of confidence. It's been my pleasure to serve as chairman for several years. And if everyone would like me to continue in that role, I'm happy to continue to do it.
Could I say a few kind words?
Sure. Commissioner Francis, please.
I'm pleased to nominate you as chair. You have served as the chairman for the entire six years that I've been on the commission and have been excellent to work with. You're very diligent about attending meetings, advising members on legal and regulation issues with implications as needed and precedence for each if necessary. We've conducted numerous public meetings townwide in the last two years for the updating the master plan and transit-oriented development regulations, the Commerce Drive regulations. And you have led us through all these with the help of Boston-based consultants and a very dedicated town staff. But very conscientious, and it would be a pleasure to have you serve as chair in for this one year term.
Thank you very much for those kind words. I appreciate it. And I echo your thoughts with regard to dedicated staff. Very much, and Emmeline, for all of your work. Appreciate that.
Appreciate those comments.
Yeah.
And appreciate the comments of Commissioner Francis. It's the chair is a close liaison role with us. And if it's not my place to say so, but second any motion, but I agree with everything that was
That's very nice. Thank you. Commissioner Berman?
I just wanted to add that you, Mr. Chair, as well as our excellent staff, Jim and Emmeline have helped us through a difficult time for our community with COVID-19.
Very true. Very true. This new format is not easy. So, anyone else have any other comments? Okay, I don't hear anyone. Very good. So the motion on the table is to elect me, Matt Wagner, as the chair for the upcoming year until the next vote in December 2021. All in favor, raise your hand or say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very, very much. I will continue to the next position that we need to fill is that of vice chair. And except motions, I see Commissioner Noonan. You have your hand raised?
I do. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Lenny Berman as vice chair.
Very good. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Corcoran. Excellent. Commissioner Noonan, comments?
Pleased to get to know Commissioner Berman. While new, he's certainly been a capable voice on this commission. And I do value the bipartisan nature of our leadership roles. Not the only reason why Commissioner Berman is being nominated. Like I said, I value his input, and I look forward to working with him going forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Corcoran?
I think that Lenny's come up to speed incredibly fast. I know it's his field anyway, but I think he's a huge addition to the
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I also agree. And Commissioner Noonan, I appreciate very much your nomination, you know, across the aisle. And I think it's really important. We've kind of, we've had that set up now for several years. And I think it works well, and I think it sends an excellent message to the community that, you know, our commission is representative of the town. And, you know, we try and keep those politics out of it. So I support the nomination very much.
I just wanted to thank you all for your kind words. I'm honored to be nominated and elected. I will serve with diligence.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? All right. The motion is for Commissioner Berman to become our vice chair until our next elections in December 2021. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations. Commissioner Berman, you are our new vice chair.
Thank you very much. And if I may add, I have big shoes to fill with succeeding Commissioner Corcoran.
Yes, Commissioner Corcoran, thank you very much for your leadership during your tenure as vice chair. It's been a pleasure working with you in that role, and appreciate your service. So the next role to fill is that of secretary. And Commissioner Levy?
I would like to nominate Meg Francis as secretary.
Very good. And Commissioner Noonan, your hand went up. Second on that. Very good. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I've had the pleasure of sitting next to and working with Meg for the last three years. And she's been dedicated and diligent, and she's been filling the role for the last year. And I'd like to see her continue in that position.
Excellent. Commissioner Noonan?
Nothing but the same. We value Meg's input, her dedication to this commission. And look forward to her continued and valued service.
Excellent. Thank you. I echo those comments. Commissioner Francis, you are and have proven yourself to be very dedicated to the role. And you have served incredibly well, and we all really appreciate that very, very much. And so thank you. So I wholeheartedly support the nomination. Any other comments? Any other commissioner? All right. The motion on the table is to elect Commissioner Francis as our secretary until our next elections in December 2021. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Do we have any opposed? Do we have any abstentions? I'm sorry? I didn't think so. No opposed? And are there any abstentions? Congratulations, Commissioner Francis. You've been elected our secretary unanimously. And also quite glad that we were able to do that again very, very smoothly. Thanks to all of you for your dedication and service to the town. On behalf of all of us in leadership positions, you know, we appreciate your service very much. Okay, next item is the schedule of meetings. So Mr. Went circulated a schedule These follow a fairly traditional format every year, right? Second and fourth Tuesday of every month, except for November and December, where we have only the one meeting. You know, we do have from time to time a modification here or there as we go along. So unless someone has a, and, you know, an objection to, you know, one of the gates or the like wants to see if we all want to talk about switching some things around, I would suggest we just have a motion to adopt the meeting schedule as drafted here. And then if there are individual issues, that we talk about those, you know, as we go forward.
Mr. Chairman, Jim Went for the record. The only thing I'm going to call your attention to is normally we put on the agenda that meetings are at McKinley School at 7:30. Given the current situation, the schedule notes that we will continue to be conducting our meetings via WebEx at 6:30 PM. Unfortunately, for at least the foreseeable future, that's going to be the case. That way, we don't have to call our meetings special meetings. Would they be regular meetings? If hopefully, when the time comes where we can convene again in person at our regular meeting, we can change that with the town clerk. But I just wanted to point that out. That's the only modification to the schedule. As in years past, as we're, we're at least for now listing that we're going to be on WebEx at 6:30 PM. If you want to change that, please let me know. But that's what the schedule has for now.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good, good call out to just highlight for everyone. I mean, I think the 6:30 time has worked better, honestly, for me personally. I mean, we're all pretty much home sort of on this sort of crazy modified schedule. And, you know, so we don't have to travel to the school and get ready and everything, enabling us to start a little bit earlier and hence end a little bit earlier. So I'm supportive of that. I mean, with that background, could I have a motion? Commissioner Noonan, see your hand. Excellent. Move to approve?
Move to approve, yes.
Okay, very good. Second by Commissioner Corcoran. I see. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else have any other questions or comments about the schedule? Very good. In favor, raise your hand or say aye. Aye? Any opposed? And any abstentions? All right, the meeting schedule as drafted has been adopted unanimously. The next item on our agenda. Which referrals, right? But it's not a separate heading. It's item 1073 North Benson Road. Request of Fairfield University for 100% release of a 27,250 car pertaining to special exception improvements in the Beltway Zone.
Okay, Jim Went, for the record, this bond release request pertains to the new Student Wellness Center that was in addition to Jogue's Residence Hall recently completed. You had in your referral packet, an email from the Engineering Department reporting that all bonded improvements have been completed to their satisfaction. We're therefore recommending the 100% release of this bond.
Good. Thank you. Can I have a motion on this? Motion by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you. And I see Commissioner Corcoran as well. Motion to, motion to release the bond. Commissioner Noonan, any comments?
No comments.
Commissioner Corcoran?
No comments.
Okay, so we have the support in file for the release of the bond. There's no reason why it should not should not be. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? The bond is released unanimously. Next item on our agenda, 86 Commerce Drive. Request of Belize Motor Sales or 100% Release of a $122,800 bond pertaining to special exception improvements in a DID zone.
Okay, again, Jim Went, for the record, Mr. Chairman, this bond release pertains to the construction of the new McKinley's Hyundai facility on Commerce Drive. Similarly, the Engineering Department has reported that all bonded improvements have been completed to their satisfaction, so we're therefore recommending 100% release.
Very good. Can I have a motion on this? Okay, Commissioner Berman, move. Commissioner Noonan, second. Thank you very much. Any comments, Commissioner Berman? Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Noonan?
No comments.
Very good. We have the supporting material in our file, and there's no reason for the bond not to be released at this time, I think. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The bond is, the bond release has been approved unanimously. Next item is 1675 Post Roads. Request of 1675 Post Road Partners for 100% Release of a $61,550 bond pertaining to zoning compliance improvements in the center design districts. Center Design District.
Okay, again, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, this bond release pertains to the 13-unit residential building at the corner of Rowan Street and Post Road. The deed restrictions for the below-market rate units have been recorded. And again, the Engineering Department has reported that all bonded improvements have been completed to their satisfaction. So once again, we are therefore recommending 100% release.
Very good. Thank you. Can I have a motion on that? Motion to approve the release by Commissioner Noonan, second by Commissioner Levy. Thank you both. Any comments, Commissioner Noonan?
No comments.
Commissioner Levy?
No comments.
Thank you. And again, the support as Mr. Went described is in our file. There's no reason why this bond should not be released. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any any abstentions? Excellent. The bond release has been approved unanimously. Next item is 216 Riverside Drive. Referral for recommendation pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes Regarding the Sale of Town Property.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went again. This 216 Riverside Drive is kind of an odd wedge-shaped parcel of land. It's only 5,300 square feet in size. It's not large enough to be a building lot. The town acquired this parcel back in 1958 through a tax foreclosure. The adjacent owner, and in the packet we sent you, there's an aerial photo and some other supporting material. The adjacent owner at 196 Riverside Drive approached the town interested in potentially purchasing it. So there was a request for bids that went on. A public bidding process took place, and that property owner was a successful bidder. The buyer's property is non-conforming at 9,147 feet. The additional area will make that parcel now conforming. He does have some plans to potentially do a detached garage. Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes requires that before the town acquires land or sells land, that a report is made by this commission to the RTM prior to their action as to whether it's a favorable, would be favorable from the town's perspective. A review by our office and other town agencies reveals no practical future town use for this parcel. There was an email in your packet from the adjacent, the other adjacent owner on the other side of this parcel, who is aware of his neighbor's prospective purchase and supports the idea that it become part of his property and is aware of his potential use for a detached garage. So it is, you know, the neighbor, the other impacted direct neighbor is well aware and on board with this proposal. The ramifications of your referral is a favorable referral. Then the RTM can approve the sale of the property with a simple majority. A negative referral, if you don't think it's in the town's interest to divest of this property, would require two-thirds vote of the RTM for that to take place. So it's just, again, it's whether you think the long-term interests of the town are better served by maintaining that piece of property or selling it to the adjacent owner in a recommendation to the RTM. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that summary. Can I have a vote on this item? Commissioner Levy?
I'd move that we send a favorable recommendation to the RTM that they allow the sale of this property.
Second by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you. Commissioner Levy, any comments to start this off?
It makes sense, and I can't imagine that the town can use that sliver, so.
Okay, Commissioner, anything to add? Yeah, I, any other commissioners? I had a couple of questions and some interesting points of interest. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Yeah. Looked like the appraisal said that, you know, minimum was, our praise value is $25,000. And we went out to bid 22.5 minimum, and that's at the minimum. I don't even know if anybody else, if there were any other bidders. Mr. Went, were there any other bidders, or was this the only bidder?
I, this was, as far as I know, I don't know for certain. But as far as I know, this, the adjacent owner was the only real bidder in the mix. But he did, was the one that kind of expressed interest with the town first before, to see if the town might consider selling it before it went out to public bid. So we couldn't just make an arms-length transaction with that particular owner. We had to put notice out to, you know, to any interested prospective buyer. So I don't know that to be a fact. It's just my understanding.
And is the referral or the recommendation here to consummate the sale with this particular buyer? Or is it just simply that we sell the land at 22.5?
Well, that's an interesting question. This proposal and this particular buyer is the qualified buyer. So I think they go hand in hand. If you think, you know, I don't know that there'd be any other buyer. If this transaction doesn't go through for some reason and a, and say the other adjacent neighbor becomes interested, I'm not sure that it would necessarily have to come back. So I think you're just looking for the general concept of whether it makes sense to sell this piece of land.
Yeah. So, I mean, and to my point, it makes sense to sell this piece of land to this owner because of the benefits that you expressed in terms of merging the lots and creating a conforming lot. Whereas now we have two non-conforming lots next to each other, you know, one of which owned by the town and one privately. So, I mean, maybe we can style our recommendation in that manner. I mean, Commissioner Levy?
I don't think that's an issue, and I don't have any reason to believe that this particular buyer will not, you know, conclude the transaction.
Yeah, so Commissioner Levy, friendly amendment to favorably recommend that the sale, that the town sell the property to this buyer, the adjacent landowner, for the reasons that articulating would be favorable for the town.
Yeah, certainly, I would concur and so modify the motion, because it will allow for a conforming use to be there as opposed to two non-conforming.
Right, okay. Commissioner Noonan, do you agree?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, all right, thanks. Any other commissioners have any other questions or comments? That's all I have. Okay, we're in none. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? None. I'm getting some feedback. You're hearing that too, Emmeline, yes?
It just muted a new call and user. Maybe that was it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. And we've, on our favorable recommendation that the town sell this land to this buyer for the reasons that we stated, that Mr. Went stated. Okay, so the next item is 309 Barberry Road. Referral for recommendation, Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes Regarding the Town Acquisition of Property.
Okay, similar to the last, this is an acquisition rather than a sale. The subject parcel, many of you may be familiar with, is an 11.74 acre parcel recently occupied by Giant Steps School, which has recently closed. There were two buildings on this site. The intended use of the building recently occupied by Giant Steps is for the Board of Education Alternative High School, known as the Walter Fitzgerald Campus. That campus is currently located on the former St. Emory School Building on Bayrow Street over near Kings Highway. The future use of the second building on the site is undetermined at this time. We did provide you with a fairly large link or packet or link to a large packet of information that provides more detail on this particular property in terms of some of the background information the Board of Ed had before them. And again, Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes entitled Municipal Improvements requires a referral to the planning commission before town acquisition of land by the RTM. This is an opportunity to relocate existing uses that are currently housed at leased facilities. I do note that Angelus Papa George, who is the facilities manager for the Board of Education, I believe, is on the call. And it would be available if you have any questions that I can't answer or beyond what was in the packet or staff report.
Yeah. Thank you for the summary. I suppose before we, before I ask for a motion on this, is there anything that Mr. Papa George would like to add? Or is he just here for, not just, but is he just available for questions and the like? Is there anything in particular that he would like to add to the?
I'll leave that to Mr. Papa George, so. I'll leave that to Mr. Papa George, so.
Okay.
So I believe you guys have the full report that we put out, including a couple of follow-up memos that came out along the way. They should answer most questions, but I can, I'm here to answer any other questions that may come up.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Does anybody, can I have a motion on this? Can pick Commissioner Berman?
I would move to make a favorable recommendation as to the purchase of the property.
Okay, very good. Can I have any one second? Commissioner Corcoran? Very good. Commissioner Berman, you want to start us off?
Yes, it appears that the availability of this property for purchase by the town coincides with the need for the town to get space for the Walter Fitzgerald Campus as a result of issues with the currently leased space and necessary repairs that would need to be done otherwise. And so I think this presents an opportunity for the town that is an important one to capitalize on if possible. And I'm aware of no reason from a planning or zoning perspective why we should not recommend the purchase of this property.
Thanks. Commissioner Corcoran?
I think this property, I'm glad that the town is getting it. It did, it was very useful in its prior use, but now that that's not there anymore, I hate to see it deteriorate and fall apart anymore than that old high school has already. And we put the other building to good use. I'm in favor of this.
Commissioner Francis?
Are we approving the transfer of all the students to this facility? I mean, is this like an approval also, not just to purchase?
No, and thank you for the question. I was wanting to make it clear, not for the commission, but also for any members of the public that are tuning in on this item. So I support the motion and I agree that we should issue a favorable recommendation to the RTM to acquire the land. The fact is that this parcel is, you know, it's large. It also sits at the end of a cul-de-sac in a residential neighborhood. And it has been used as a school, you know, I think since the 50s. I mean, it was a religious school for a while and there was a period of time when it wasn't. And it was, I think it was empty, but then Giant Steps came in with the alternative education, or special, alternative school for special education. And so I think that was in the, probably the early 90s. And so for the last, let's just call it generation, the parcel has been used, you know, as for an educational institution. It was a school in one of the buildings. And so when Giant Steps closed their doors, you know, the question of what was to become of the property, you know, loomed, I think, in the community. And, and so I agree. This is a wonderful development that the town should absolutely capitalize on because as explained in the reports, you know, we're currently in a facility that needs, you know, repairs and such. And we can, we can utilize this space in sort of continuing the use of what it had been for many, many years. I would, however, also, on the other part of the report that suggests, you know, the possible uses of the, of the second building still need to be determined, right? And I think that's the important aspect of my comment. So Commissioner Francis, direct answer to your question. We are not approving transfer the school. We're not approving a facility. We're not approving a use. Or this is an application to us to make a recommendation to the RTM as to whether to buy the property. If we do so, it goes to the RTM, the RTM then needs to have a vote, as Mr. Went explained in the last one. If we, if we favorably recommend, then the RTMs can simply pass with a majority. And if we were to say, no, we don't think it's a good idea, and the RTM took it up anyway, then they would have to approve it with a supermajority, right? But then it goes to contract and they go through the process of actually acquiring the land. Town pays for it. And then the town, through the Board of Education, has to come back to us with a special exception application with detailed plans of what the school is, what it's supposed to be, what the traffic will look like, what the bus routes will be. All of that in the context of what we traditionally know, right, as the special exception application. And there are a number of different factors that go into that, right? Can't hurt property values, can't create undue traffic congestion, right, all that kind of stuff. Yeah, right? And so to that end, you know, I would just, it's not in a motion and I don't think it needs to be formal, but I would just express for, you know, Mr. Papa George's benefit and the members of the public also who are interested, that, you know, the possible other uses have to go through that same process. And the notion that, you know, we could put into the other building, I forget where I saw it, new central office, you know? It's not clear to me that this site would be suitable as a new central office for the Board of Education, right? It's a very different use than what has been there for many, many years. And I don't have the details of that proposal, right? That's not before us today. As is the school not before us today. But just sort of looking, you know, into the future in terms of what the Board of Education may be considering for all alternatives to use that second building. We all just need to be aware that those have to take into account the impact to the neighborhood, the traffic, the streets, the building and so forth, all of that, all of those considerations for a special exception application. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, 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 it does. I sat, as you did and many other commissioners, through the Giant Steps hearing, so it's fresh in our memory.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, you know, there would be.
They bring the land all the way out to, I remember they referred to, there was a former road. Not that it's there anymore, but a path, it probably was out to Mill Hill Terrace if I had to guess. But they're buying the whole parcel of land that does go all the way out.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this parcel used to be larger when the diocese owned it. The town acquired a piece of that already and has open space in the, the, the remainder of the property, the 11.74 acres, it will be a separate parcel, but it will be owned by the town. So to answer your question is yes. And if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just go back one step to your comments. Just by way of background, when the Giant Steps proposal was originally made, not the more recent one that was the subject of litigation that you may be more familiar with, but the recent, when the Giant Steps School was established, there was a zoning compliance application made to the commission. At that time, the commission rendered an opinion that the use of the properties of school predated the requirements for a special exception and it wasn't a change of use. The question will be, and again, it's not a question for tonight, a question for another day, is whether the town's use for their facility is a change in use as a use of the town of Fairfield versus a school subject to a special exception or zoning compliance application. That'll be the commission's call at another time. But clearly, any subsequent use of the second building that was the subject of the more recent Giant Steps application would definitely require a special exception application of the commission.
Right. Well, thank you. And even if the continued use of the existing building as a school could come to us as a compliance, it would, it is still within our discretion and it would be my recommendation that we would pass that over to a public hearing so that we could get a full presentation and opportunity for the public to be heard on that. Also begs the question as to whether, if it is a continued use even after it's been shuttered for a period of time.
Yeah, again, that's not an issue we need to resolve this evening. As you're just making your recommendation just with respect to the potential purchase of the property, but something that will be the subject of future discussion without a doubt.
Yeah, so. Very good. So, you know, with that, does, do any other members of the commission have any questions for Mr. Papa George? Comments? Mr. Papa George, do you have any questions or comments?
Not at this time.
Excellent, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so the motion is to return a favorable recommendation to the RTM to acquire the property. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstention? Very good. Our motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Papa George.
Thank you.
The next section, that brings us to two applications for recommendation to public hearing. The first is zoning regulation amendment, application of Fairfield Medical LLC to proposing new section 12.4.29 Inclusionary Multifamily Residential Use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. And I'll read them together. The second item is related. Item 2A, 2B, 4185 Black Rock Turnpike, zoning compliance application of Fairfield Medical LLC pertaining to a 94-unit residential development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut's General Statutes in the Design Commercial District.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, these two applications, A and B, as you read, are companion applications essentially for the development of what more familiarly might be known as the Plant Factory Site, which is opposite, opposite from the Hi-Ho Motel, previously approved for medical office building. Proposal is for a 94-unit residential development with a companion regulation amendment proposal, which does require a public hearing.
Very good. Thank you. Public hearing is required. Can I have a motion on these two items? Commissioner Noonan, move to approve to send to public hearing? Very good. Second? Can I have a second? Commissioner Berman, thank you. Any, any comments or questions? See anyone? And I don't see, I don't see any hands and I don't hear anything. Very good. Okay, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Any abstention? That motion carries unanimously for both items. Tarrigan, the little feedback noises are like right when I ask people if they have anything more to say. It's very strange. It's, yeah. Here we go. Okay. Next item is Old Business, related to A and B. Call them together. We have a zoning regulation amendment, application of 131 Beach Road LLC to amend Section 5.1.4 of the zoning regulations of the town of Fairfield. And 3B, 131 Beach Road, zoning compliance application of 131 Beach Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a 40-unit residential building pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes in the A Zone.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went, for the record, it's, I will go through the report. It's been a couple of meetings since we've had any kind of discussion on this, over through this, and then turn it back over for your discussion. So as you just noted, there are two applications here. The first is a regulation amendment, which proposes a new section 5.4.1A to create a new inclusionary multifamily residential community use with a housing opportunity or affordable housing component within the A Zone. As you recall, eligible parcels are proposed in the A Zone must be both within 600 feet of Town Hall, the Town Hall Campus and the Post Road and in close proximity to commercially zoned properties. Such developments must meet the 8-3, 8-30G standard of 30% of the dwelling units being deed restricted as below market rate units. And the proposed design requirements that are proposed include a minimum lot size of half an acre, minimum lot width of 100 feet, minimum front setback of 50 feet, minimum side setback of 10 feet, minimum rear setback of 25 feet, maximum building height of five stories or 60 feet, maximum impervious lot coverage of 90%, and minimum parking of one and one-quarter spaces per unit and a dwelling unit density of 35 units per half acre. Essentially, the design requirements are tailored for the development proposed for this subject parcel. And as we've discussed before, it is important to note that under the law, it is not necessary for the applicant to amend the zoning regulations or change the zone in order for a project to be approved as, for an 8-30G set aside development. As zoning compliance, as you know, is not mandatory for the approval of an affordable housing application. The standard considerations for a regulation amendment are as follows. Is the, one, is the proposed consistent with the plan of conservation and development? Two, does time, experience, and responsible planning for contemporary or future conditions reasonably indicate the need for the proposed amendment? Three, has it been demonstrated that the proposal is warranted and would serve the general health, welfare, and safety of the town? Four, does the proposed amendment promote a level of development that would serve to protect property values in the neighborhood and enhance the community and accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character? And five, would the proposed amendment permit a level of development that would increase undue traffic congestion? The second companion piece to this application is the zoning compliance application of the site plan for the development in chief. And again, the subject site is approximately 0.65 acres in size, located within the residence A Zone. The site has been the home to the Fidelity Masonic Temple since 1950. A five-story building is proposed with four occupied stories above a ground floor lobby and at-grade parking. The height of the proposed building is 56 feet to the roof midpoint and 62 feet to the roof ridge. A total of 40 residential units are proposed, comprised of 16 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. 12 of the 40 units will be deed restricted as below market rate units comprised of five one-bedroom units and seven two-bedroom units. A total of 55 parking spaces are proposed or 1.375 spaces per unit. The site presently has two driveways on Beach Road. The proposed site plan will utilize the southerly driveway location for a single ingress and egress driveway. During the hearing, you heard lots of issues raised chiefly centered on traffic safety and the overall scale and massing of this project and its impact on the adjacent historic district. The traffic report indicates that, estimates, I'm sorry, that there will be 15 and 18 trips respectively during the AM and PM hours with a 24-hour development traffic volume of 218 trips. The trip distribution was estimated to be 85% to and from the north towards the Post Road, to and from the Post Road, and 15% to and from the south via the old Post Road. To provide adequate driveway sightlines, the report, the traffic report recommends eliminating six parking spaces along the easterly side of Beach Road. There was public opposition to the removal of those spaces and concern expressed about the estimated. to the removal of those spaces and concern expressed about the estimated distribution of traffic trips, with some folks opining that they thought that a higher percentage of vehicles would be coming and going from the Old Post Road rather than the 15% estimated in the applicant's traffic, by the applicant's traffic expert. With regard to historic resources, there was testimony from the Chair of the Historic District Commission as well as a historic preservation specialist, who both opined, as some, the neighbors did as well, that the development is incongruous with the historic neighborhood and that there would be a diminishment of the sense of place and direct visual impact to the adjacent historic district. Reference was made during the proceedings to two court cases, the first being United Progress versus the Borough of Stonington, which case stands for the prospect that the impact to historic resources is in fact a legitimate matter within the commission's purview to consider. And the second case was Cross Street LLC versus Westport. Planning Zone Commission discusses taking into consideration a community's progress in providing affordable housing and the balancing test of potential impacts versus the need to provide even more additional affordable housing. There was a lot of discussion and testimony regarding the progress that the town has made in recent years toward the goal of providing affordable housing. We heard from Mark Barnhart in particular, talking that the number of authorized units to date, if completed, would qualify for moratorium status. Since 2012, we've had 12 set aside 8-30G projects comprised of 383 total units and 185 affordable units authorized. And since 2015, when this commission adopted the inclusionary zoning provision that requires 10% below market rate units for projects, projects with 10 or more units, has, the commission has authorized a total of 892 dwelling units, including 91 affordable units. So combined, the overall total of authorized units since 2012 is 1,275 units with 276 of those, or 21.6 of the total being restricted below market rate units. The applicant's rebuttal indicated that removal of those six on-street parking spaces was a recommendation, in their view, not necessary for the establishment of the proper sightline. They would agree to recommend to the police commission to remove those spaces, but would not agree to a mandate that removal of those spaces would be a prerequisite to the construction of this development. They also argued that the reliance on the cross-street case is misplaced, in their view, as the impact on the historic resources in that case in Westport was not enough to outweigh the need for affordable housing. The applicant also argues that the overall design enassing of the development does not rise to an issue of public health and safety. As this commission knows, as we've seen in the other applications before this commission, the standards for review of an affordable housing application differ from a typical zoning application. As you well know, for a denial of an affordable housing application to be sustained, the burden is on the commission to prove based on evidence in the record compiled before it that the decision from which an appeal may be taken and the reasons cited for the decision are supported by sufficient evidence in the record, that the commission also has the burden to prove that, A, the decision is necessary to protect a substantial public interest in health, safety, or other matters which the commission may legally consider; B, such public interests clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing; and C, such public interests cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the proposal. Court cases have indicated that the record must establish more than a mere possibility of harm, and the record must contain evidence as to a quantifiable probability that such harm will result. And that is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Do I mute, Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Went, for that detailed summary. Appreciate that. Can I have a motion on this item? Commissioner Noonan?
Are we gonna be just, I think we need to take the amendment first, or are we doing them simultaneously?
Good question. I would suggest that we could, you could move one at a time, right? I mean, make a motion with respect to both, with respect to one.
I'd move to deny the regulation amendment.
Okay. We'll handle each one individually, okay? So, motion to deny 3A, the zoning regulation amendment of 131 Beach Road. Do I have a second on that? Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you. Commissioner Noonan, you want to start the discussion on this one?
Sure. My understanding is the applicant had brought this forth more in line with what the attorney normally uses as far as doing a regulation amendment and this site plan application. I mean, simply put, I find that the regulation amendments don't meet any of the criteria as outlined by Mr. Went, and for that reason, I would just simply deny it.
Very good. Commissioner Corcoran, anything to add to that?
As these regulation amendments are not necessary for us to approve or not approve the 830G, I just don't think there's any plus side for us in approving such an amendment.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other members of the commission? Right, so I agree. You know, each of the considerations that we're required to think about, you know, regulation amendment, the first one, the time experience tells that we need to make a change. No, the only criticism is in us is because the developer here at 131 Beach. If you're not speaking, could we please ask that you mute your line, the feedback? Thank you very much. The only reason that we have this in front of us is because the developer here would like a conforming development should we approve 830, the application for 830G and 3B. But the essence, Section 830G, is that the developer doesn't have to comply with our regulations. And the only reason that they have the ability to, if it were to be approved, the only reason they would have the ability to construct what they're proposing, a 40-unit apartment building on 131 Beach Road, would be under 830G because it doesn't conform to our regulations, because it's too big and has too many units, all those kinds of good things. You know, regulations are in place, you know, for a reason. And so, you know, I agree. It's not necessary for our consideration of the underlying affordable housing development application under 830G, and I don't think that we ought to approve the regulation. Anyone else have comments? No? Okay. So the motion is to deny 3A, the zoning regulation amendment. All in favor of that motion, say aye or raise your hand. And any opposed to the motion? Anyone? So that motion carries unanimously, which means that the application for zoning regulation amendment is denied unanimously. So the next item remaining is 3B, 131 Beach, zoning compliance application. Commissioner Noonan, you have your hand, Rick.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd move to grant the application with the conditions that first, the applicant secure the requisite permission and/or approval to remove the on-street parking spots as recommended by the applicant's traffic expert to create a safe line of sight, and two, that the applicant returns to the commission with revised plan for the building to be three stories total with adequate parking, height not to exceed 36 feet as we define in our regulations.
Very good. Would anyone like to second that? Can I have a second? Commissioner Francis? Commissioner Francis, I think you raised your hand. Do you want to second the motion?
It sounds somewhat reasonable, yes, I will second it.
Okay, well, we're gonna get into some discussion here, and if there are different ideas that people have about Commissioner Noonan's motion and the conditions that he articulates, we can always suggest friendly amendments and switch things around a little bit. Let's see where this conversation takes us.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, sorry, before you, I just want to make sure I've got this correctly before you amend or change it. It's the application, or the motion, is the first condition would be that the applicant secure the requisite approval to remove the off-street parking as recommended in the traffic report, and the second is to return to the commission with a plan of a three-story structure in total with adequate parking not exceeding 36 feet in height. Is that, I just want to make sure I've captured that correctly.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Commissioner Levy, you have a question?
Yes, just by way of clarification, it's the intent of the motion that the total height be 36 feet, or is it three stories above the proposed parking?
No. So the total building would be three stories.
Parking is two.
However they come back to the, to us with it, if there's parking on the first floor or around the building, or whatever they decide, but three stories total.
Right. So perhaps that's a good place to start. Let's do this in the usual manner first, where we can get these ideas out on the table. Commissioner Noonan, in keeping with our system, you know, it's your motion. Do you want to lead off the discussion here with some comments?
I do, yes, please. I do have a written statement, considering that this, we took a long time with this for a reason, because it was needed attention, and for that reason, I wrote down, I have a statement that's unfortunately a little lengthy, so please bear with me, but I thought that this required a written statement to organize my thoughts. The relevant standards are known to this commission and were adequately presented by Mr. Went as an introduction to this application and our executive review of it. I find this application is unsafe with respect to the line of sight for the existing premises for application, and that the application improperly and irreparably damages the integrity of Fairfield's valuable historic district. The issues are amply supported in the record and would outweigh the need for affordable housing, but the conditions of approval should remedy these issues in my judgment. With respect to the line of sight, during the hearing, we received evidence that would exist for vehicles leaving the parking lot of the proposed building, and specifically related to on-street parking. The evidence that we received was contradictory. The applicant and his attorney argued that on-street parking in the vicinity of the premises rarely occurs and would not be an issue. Our own town engineers wrote a letter dated October 13th, 2020, which is in our record, where they state, quote, "Based on observations outside of special events, church, funeral, et cetera, there have been few cars parked along the stretch of roadway." However, this evidence contradicts, other evidence contradicts these conclusions. The applicant's own traffic expert recognized the line of sight deficiency and recommended that a certain number of on-street public parking spots be removed in order to obtain a safe line of sight using intersectional light distance calculation. This commission has relied upon the intersectional sight distance line of sight calculation to ensure and promote public safety in the past, and has done so consistently for these types of applications and roadways. And this commission has also traditionally taken parked cars into account for similar type of roads as Beach Road, and this is substantiated by the traffic, the applicant's own traffic expert, who recommends that his recommendation, oh, excuse me, who states that his recommendation to remove the six on-street parking is, quote, "Based on current town standards," unquote. Our police captain has testified that he opposed the removal of any on-street parking near the premises. Neighbors, particularly the principal of the nearby school, also provided evidence about traffic congestion, the fact that on-street parking in the area is used and valuable, and the need to ensure that the area is safe with respect to traffic. I find the testimony of the police captain and school principal and neighbors to be credible that the area suffered some high congestion at peak hours and for special events where safe line of sights are needed. I also find that the recommendation of the traffic expert that removal of the on-street parking spots at issue is needed to obtain a safe line of sight. The arguments for leaving on-street parking unaffected fail for several reasons. First, if the spots are not used or are only used infrequently, why would the applicant's own traffic expert make his recommendation? Obviously, the traffic expert felt that obtaining a safe line of sight warranted the removal of on-street parking regardless of the alleged frequency of the parking. In addition, why would our own police captain testify as he did, along with the neighboring principal and neighbors? Second, the frequency per week of on-street parking is not directly on point with what we should be considering. Rather, the poor question is, what is the frequency of parking during busy times? The applicant's traffic expert looks to peak hours, as these are the times of heavy congestion, which are the times when issues of safety arise, not noon on a Wednesday. The principal of the school across the street objected the application based on traffic and congestion, particularly during drop-off in the morning, and safety at this time would be paramount, and proper line of sights would be needed. Special events, church, funeral, town events, et cetera, would also bring increased but known congestion to the area consistently with the area, and our police captain testified in this respect. And again, safety at this time is paramount, and proper line of sights would be needed. Better on-street parking is limited during work or school time. Our examination is on busy times and known times of congestion. Third, the arguments for leaving on-street parking depend on existing circumstances without considering the impact of the application and its density. While on-street parking is in line with past proposals, while onsite parking, excuse me, while onsite parking is in line with past proposals, the probability of on-street parking from residents of the proposed building near the building and the driveway issue is high and should be expected given the scale of the proposal, not just, and not just residents, but their visitors would also be utilizing this. Even if one or two cars park on-street for need or for convenience, it will be near the building and obstructing the line of sight, creating a hazard. People park in the closest spot, and these would be the first to be taken by visitors or residents when available or needed. In their letter, our engineers note that the Connecticut Department of Transportation told them, the engineering department, that parked vehicles on a public street should not be considered blocked objects to be included in line of sight calculations. That may be appropriate for state roads like Post Road, where there will be no on-street parking if parked cars were considered block objects. But that rule, as our engineers note, should not be and is not a bright line rule, nor should the rule be applied in this instance on a municipal road, given the testimony and the evidence presented during the hearing. The engineering department does opine that there are cases where parked cars should be considered in line of sight considerations, and the applicant's traffic expert notes that his recommendation to remove the on-street parking is due to our custom in order to obtain a safe line of sight. And just a quick aside about the applicant's traffic expert during the rebuttal. At that stage, the applicant's traffic expert appeared to backtrack on his initial recommendation and supported the use of sight stopping distance as the preferable calculation of line of sight as opposed to the intersectional sight distance. This commission and Fairfield regularly uses the intersectional sight distance and not sight stopping distance. For the intersectional sight distance, speed and distance are calculated to determine a distance that is needed for a driver exiting premises to see oncoming traffic and to make a safe decision as to whether it is safe to enter the road, taking a right or left. and to make a safe decision as to whether it is safe to enter the road, taking a right or left. This distance also provides drivers on the road with enough time to see a car entering the road and safely adjust his or her driving. This calculation makes sense for municipal roads, as opposed to the sight stopping distance, which is the distance calculated for a driver to safely stop. In utilizing intersectional sight distance, the obligation to be safe remains on both the driver entering the roadway and the drivers on the roadway. For the sight stopping distance, it places the onus on avoiding a collision on the drivers on the road, so as to only provide enough space for the driver to stop in order to avoid an accident. The sight stopping distance provides less distance than intersectional sight distance, and reason dictates that it is not enough distance for a driver entering the roadway to safely determine whether he or she can enter the roadway. The intersectional sight distance calculation is the appropriate form of, for beach road in this site and application. And the intersectional sight distance must be adhered to in order to ensure public safety for this site and application, only placing the obligation on drivers on beach road to avoid collisions exiting the site. Exiting the site by stopping is unsafe. Both the exiting driver and the driver on the road must be given the needed distance in order to make safe driving decisions. If not enough room is provided to exiting drivers, then that driver is inching into the road, more focused on drivers on beach road in order to exit the site at the expense of pedestrians. For example, if you're trying to take a right out of the site and inching out with your attention to the left, you may attempt a quick exit without properly looking to your right for a pedestrian, cyclist, et cetera, particularly during busy times of day, especially mornings with school drop-offs. These are the times when on-street parking will be in demand, and when having a proper line of sight will be essential to the public safety. Back to the on-street parking, in the past, this commission has conditioned approvals on an applicant securing the removal of on-street parking. In these instances, the applicant's traffic expert makes this recommendation, which has occurred here, and the applicant agrees to the condition. The applicant, in this instance, signaled readiness to acquiesce to this condition of approval until public comment. The applicant is now indicating that the removal of on-street parking was a recommendation but not needed, or can it be instituted by this commission? The applicant has also indicated that this commission does not have the authority to condition its approval on securing the removal of on-street parking as advised by its own traffic expert, and I disagree with the applicant. Among other things, this commission is tasked with adjudicating whether this 830G application presents a public hazard. I find that the line of sight is unsafe based on the on-street parking near the premises impeding the line of sight, and the record amply substantiates this finding. As part of our 830G obligations, we are obligated to find and order remediations in order to cure safety hazards if we are able. Hence, my proposed condition for the applicant to have the on-street parking removed, which will remedy the unsafe line of sight. In review, in reviewing the crossroads decision, which cites to CMB Capital and Kaufman, I believe this commission is obligated to find remediations to safety hazards in an 830G application, even if that means that the applicant must meet these conditions by receiving approval from another body. In crossroads, that applicant had to receive approval from the traffic authority to remove public parking spaces. In CMB Capital, that applicant had to receive approval from the applicable body regarding sewers. And in Kaufman, that applicant had to make necessary road improvements. This case law indicates that the commission has an obligation to condition its approval on a condition needed, excuse me, had it to, has an obligation to condition its approval in order to remediate a safety hazard, even if that requires an applicant to obtain something from another body. While I do not support the idea of losing the on-street parking based on our police captain, school principal, and the neighbor's testimony, I find that the line of sight is a substantial public safety hazard. Removing the on-street parking as outlined by the applicant's traffic expert will remove that hazard. Therefore, I first condition the approval of eight, of this 830G application on the applicant securing the removal of the on-street parking as indicated by its traffic expert. Now, to the second condition of approval, you know, reducing the size to three stories total. In reviewing evidence and case law, I find that preserving Fairfield's historic district is a substantial interest that is, that this commission may legally consider. I find that this application with five stories impairs the historic district due to its height, which at five stories would be one of the tallest buildings in Fairfield and visible in the historic district. The condition to reduce the size of the building to three stories represents a reasonable change to the application to avoid unreasonable and unnecessary harm to Fairfield's valued historic district. Fairfield's historic district is not an afterthought or a minute aspect to our community. Fairfield values its historic district and places considerable time and resources in protecting and enhancing it. The applicant admits that his bill, that this building will be visible in the historic district. This visibility would vitiate the integrity of the historic district. There are nearby trees on adjacent properties that provide some screening, but those trees are not tall enough to completely screen the proposed building, nor would it, nor would some trees provide year-round screening. The trees are also not on the applicant's, or, excuse me, the trees are not, are also not the applicant's responsibility. So if they fell or were cut down, there would be no mechanism to force a replacement, ignoring the fact that the replacement would need to be a full-grown tree, provide the same level of screening, incomplete as it would be. During the public comment portion, there was testimony from experts and laypeople that this building would impair the historic district, and I accept that testimony, and I find it credible. Specifically, we had two experts testify that the building would impair the historic district. Dr. Raymond Locke and the Chair of our Historical Society, also an architect. State Senator Wong also provided his opinion that historic considerations are a valid concern for 830G applications, and that the building would impair the historic, excuse me, the historic district. It does not take an expert to reasonably state that a five-story, a five-floor building adjacent to the historic district and visible in the historic district impairs the historic district. If constructed as proposed, this would be one of the tallest buildings contemplated in Fairfield. Aside from TOD buildings, it would be the tallest residential building.
Here, I got it here.
The applicant did not present any testimony that the five-story building would not impair the historic district. Again, the applicant did not rebut the evidence that the building would impair the historic resources of a town. The applicant knew or should have known that preservation of the historic district would be a predominant issue for this application, and their failure to present evidence spoke volumes, potentially conceding the issue. In addition, the applicant did not explicitly agree that preserving the historic district was of valid interest for 830G analysis, but he did not, but it did not contest the notion either. Instead, the applicant simply noted that the premises at issue are not in the historic district, but the road maps demonstrate that it is adjacent to the district and visible in the historic district, therefore impacting the historic district due to its unreasonable height. With respect to the historic district issue, the applicant attempted to, one, discredit the experts who testified during public comment that the building would impair the historic district, and, two, argue that Fairfield will not sufficiently demonstrate to a court that it made serious inroads to advancing its affordable housing stock. The applicant's attempt to discredit the experts lacks any merit, and I find that the experts, as well as the laypeople, testified credibly that the application would impair the historic district. With respect to the applicant's second point, Fairfield, and this commission in particular, has amply demonstrated a serious commitment to affordable housing and increasing its affordable housing units. In support of its point to the contrary, the applicant cited to a Superior Court case finding that Fairfield did not demonstrate its commitment to affordable housing to affirm the denial of an 830G application. First, that decision was in 2017. Second, it is unclear what the record was in front of the court that rendered its decision. I and others have served on this commission for several years, and we have always respected and advanced affordable housing applications unless the application presented valid safety concerns. We heard from the Director of the Affordable Housing Committee, Mr. Mark Barnhart, who in response to some of the questions said the following. When asked by the Chair, "In your professional opinion, do you believe that the town of Fairfield has taken substantial steps to meet the need for affordable housing?", the answer from Mr. Barnhart, "Yeah, one of the things that I found even at the time at which I came to work for the town, I was impressed with the record that was before me. The town of Fairfield did a lot of different creative things to create affordable housing opportunities here. Anywhere from doing land swaps to facilitate the development of affordable housing to acting as a developer and self-financing the development of affordable housing units. And since that time, as evidenced by some of the work done more recently in terms of creating the Housing Trust Fund, the Inclusionary Zoning Regulation, the Inclusionary Zoning Fee, and the like, I think the town has made substantial strides in not only providing opportunities to facilitate development, but actually creating those units along the way," unquote. Another question from Chair, the Chair, whether in his opinion we've made the kind of progress necessary to, in order to mitigate some of the impact of a development like this. I don't think we are hearing any pushback on the type of use, affordable housing, multifamily apartment, parking, all of that, but ultimately, the question that we need to address is whether we've advanced enough in addressing the need for affordable housing such that we can lawfully take into account the impact of this development on the environmental resource in the nature of the historic district and the history that would be impacted by the development. And Mr. Barnhart replied, quote, "I will say that based on the actions of the town and this commission have made to date, barring no other approvals or new, or new developments, we are actually on a pathway, not just to meet, but to surpass the threshold requirements for a moratorium under the statute. So as indicated, there are a substantial number of units in the development currently that far and away exceed the requirements of at least the initial moratorium threshold that I mentioned earlier," unquote. During public comment, we received evidence identifying Fairfield's commitment to affordable housing by virtue of recently approved and constructed 830G developments. While we do not yet qualify for a moratorium, when all the units that have approved, been approved, are constructed, we will qualify. In addition, Fairfield would be much farther along in 830G's perspective if the law did not arbitrarily and unreasonably preclude Fairfield's affordable housing units constructed before 1990 from its analysis. If those units, again, constructed before the state mandate were considered, we would be having a different conversation. Other evidence of Fairfield's commitment to affordable housing is its Housing Authority and our creation of an Affordable Housing Trust. Under regulations, all permit fees for new construction or additions require an additional surcharge to raise funds for the trust fund in which is administered by the Affordable Housing Committee. Fairfield raised over $800,000 and is now in the process of producing affordable housing using those funds. Fairfield's Housing Authority has been active in our community and recently purchased and has been approved for buildings on High Street. This commission has required the developer at the metro station to set aside 12% of constructed units for affordable housing instead of 10% per our regulations, with the promise that this commission would review our current regulations to potentially match that 12% in our regulation. Our Phil, all Fairfield residents who speak during public hearings for 830G application acknowledge the need and benefits of affordable housing. I'm comfortable with Fairfield's records, both current and past, demonstrating a serious commitment to affordable housing. Finally, I selected three stories to mirror other affordable housing applications that this commission has approved in residential areas and to ensure the preservation of the historic district. During rebuttal, the applicant's attorney stated in conclusory fashion that three stories would not be financially feasible, and that four would be possible if there were less affordable units. The applicant provided no evidence to support this statement or why three stories would not be financially feasible when a three, when three-story affordable housing projects exist regularly in Fairfield. The only argument we heard was the applicant's attorney, who said reduction in the scale of the building would not be feasible. No business plan was presented or any other evidence. I find it very hard to believe that no reduction in scale is possible. That is simply not credible, given the number of market rate units that would be in a building of three stories. Further supporting my analysis is that all of the 830G developments in Fairfield's average just about, just over 46 units per acre in density. The beach road proposal at 40 units on .65 acres equates to 61.5 units per acre. Other developers have made it work at much lower density. At 30 units, it would be right at the average of 46 units per acre, though that is up to the applicant to come back with a three-story, uh, new proposal. I see no reason in the record why, uh, three stories would not be financially feasible for this developer. In addition, there was no evidence presented as to whether a four-story building would impair the historic district. Based on the evidence that I, that was prevented, that was presented, I believe that four stories would be at the tops of the neighboring trees and still visible in the historic district, either because it is taller than the trees or that the trees would not screen all year. Fairfield values affordable housing and is committed to increasing its stock. This commission has demonstrated its commitment to affordable housing in words and conduct. Fairfield residents regularly impair in front of this commission to voice support for affordable housing projects. Residents who oppose affordable housing project always, and credibly, voice support for affordable housing and base their objections within the statutory criteria for reviewing and denying affordable housing projects. My proposed motion to approve with the stated condition responsibly advocates for affordable housing at this location. The stated conditions simply mitigate against an unsafe hazard and the unreasonable and avoidable impairment to Fairfield's historic district. Thank you for letting me go through that.
Uh, thank, thank you very, very much. As you mentioned in your opening remarks, it's a very complicated matter, and we had public hearings on four different evenings, and we heard hours upon hours of testimony, and there are various issues that we need to consider. And so, you know, it's very helpful to have, uh, your motion initially and then supported by, you know, a detailed analysis. And so, I believe that it was Commissioner Francis who seconded your motion. So why don't we turn to you, Commissioner Francis, and if you'd like to, you know, voice your, your own support or comment on Commissioner Noonan, or simply adopt his talents?
Well, I thank Commissioner Noonan for the massive legal research. That was excellent. Um, I, I too have a prepared statement, but it will be simpler and shorter.
Excellent.
I find this proposal to be substantially out of character with the adjoining historic district of Fairfield. Townwide, residents are very proud to have these homes from federal and colonial times gracing the area near our downtown and shoreline. They are large homes and costly to maintain in accordance with the regulations governing the historic district. Installing a higher structure, which covers almost the whole site as a gateway to that district, is not fitting. Secondly, while Section 10.15 contains some sight screening requirements, the applicant has not provided any reports on the health of the trees shielding the proposed building from the old Post Road residents directly affected, nor offered to replace the trees when they die or are felled by natural disaster. All trees providing screening are, in fact, on abutting properties. This developer is going to have to provide tall, fairly dense screening on his property. Thirdly, no one at all has objected to 30% of the apartments being affordable. In fact, there was testimony that they could all be affordable. That is not the issue. What people find unacceptable is a 62-foot-high structure covering 88% of the site in a zone where there's a 36-foot height limit and a 20% lot coverage limitation. We realize that 830G construction does not have to abide by these zoning requirements, and therein lies the problem. When is too massive, too much, and completely out of character in a neighborhood? I think that this may be that situation. Lastly, the interest of preserving Fairfield's historic district as a town treasure outweighs the need for affordable housing at this site. And such interests cannot be protected by the changes offered by the applicant, removing one story from the building. However, more substantive changes such as reducing the overall height and footprint. Creating some backyard space for the apartment residents to enjoy and providing onsite screening. Could earn acceptance from neighbors and this commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Very good. And, and to be clear, you're also, um, supporting the condition of approval. Uh, to remove the parking spaces from the street. You, you spoke. In support of the overall reduction in, in, in height of the building. Um, but the, you're, you're supporting that portion of the motion as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you. Any other commissioners, um. Want to, um, join this conversation, have some remarks of their own? Talk about any one of the topics. Commissioner Levy?
Need to remember to unmute, um. When, um, I live in the vicinity of this, uh, uh, proposed eight thirty G, uh, application. And when I first heard, uh, that there was a, gonna be a proposal to, uh, uh, put an eight thirty G, uh. Uh, facility in affordable housing in this area. Uh, I thought that was great. Um, you know, I go through this intersection four to six times a day. I'm familiar. Uh, with the Masonic Lodge that's been there for many years. And frankly, I can't think of a much better place, uh, to have affordable housing. It's, uh, close to the downtown commercial area. It's near public transportation. It's a block from Sherman School, um, you know, where kids would be able to walk to the elementary school. And in particular, uh, I mean, the importance of affordable housing is it provides economic opportunity. Um, unfortunately, when I did see the proposal, when it was submitted, uh, my biggest concern is it's just too big and too much. Um, you know, uh, this historic district, well, it's not in the historic district, it's adjacent to it. Uh, and again, it's a gateway between the historic district. And the, the commercial building, uh, and a funeral home and a church, uh, so it's right in between. But four stories over a parking garage would seriously impact. Um, the, uh, visual integrity of the historic district. Uh, it would be an eyesore and even with the existing very high trees, uh. Uh, particularly in the winter, one's, uh, you know, enjoyment, the, uh, the general area of which the town rightly should be very proud. And which has been preserved through a historic district would be irreparably harmed. Uh, by a building that's sixty-two feet high, uh, with an average of, you know, including the average in the Gable area. It would be fifty-six, but a ridge line is sixty-two. Uh, it's just too much and it would do irreparable harm. Uh, to the historic district and the important, um, interests that the town has in preserving. Um, the integrity of that historic district. Um, that being said, uh, I cannot agree with the, uh, um, the proposal that it be limited to thirty-six feet. Uh, to my mind, um, cause I'm, I, I think, uh, there was testimony that there's actually a. A declination between the corner of the old post and Beach Road to this site of about eight or nine feet. Um, limiting the building to thirty-six feet, uh. Would, to my mind, impact the economic viability and, um, is sort of. Uh, it's more than is required to balance the interest. Uh, between, uh, the impact on the neighborhood and the need for affordable housing. Um. Yeah, and it should be clear that, you know, I, I'm not relying on, uh, the photos, uh, or the, the artistic rendering. Uh, which I think was out of scale, uh, which, uh, basically showed the building to be overly massive, uh. I mean, it was totally out of scale and, uh, I am not relying on that in any sense, but then, uh, there was, there was also submitted by the applicant. Uh, what appeared to be a more realistic, uh, depiction of the relative scale of this proposal. Uh, proposed building with the actual existing trees and neighborhood. Uh, so my feeling, and I sort of feel like I'm arguing a double negative, um. I approve, I would approve the, uh, application with a condition that the size be reduced. But I would limit it to being the, uh, basically four stories, the parking garage plus three. And still be subject to all the requirements of eight thirty G in terms of the percentage of affordable housing. Uh, which would basically probably, uh, uh, restrict the height to fifty feet. Uh, as measured with the average, uh, of the, uh, you know, upper floor. Uh, but basically, uh, three, uh, the four floors, which would be the parking garage with the three above. Uh, so that would be my approach to it in terms of balancing the two interests.
So, so let me, if I could just ask, uh, maybe engage you a little bit on, on that, um, uh, for a moment. Um. So I, I, I personally like. I, I, I support, uh, Commissioner Noonan's, uh, motion and for all the reasons that he articulated. Um, uh, um, I, I don't know that thirty-six feet. Is necessarily the right number, uh, so I'm, I'm open to, to discussion on that point. Um, but to that point, I think we need a number. Uh, I, I don't think that it is, uh, uh, sufficient for us to speak in terms of stories. And I, and I also, uh, think that we might consider speaking in terms of units because. Um, we do have the experience, substantial experience with other, uh, developments, uh, around town. Both that have been done by, you know, the, the town of Fairfield as well as private developers where we have, um. Uh, the number of units per acre and the number of, of stories, the number of floors and the overall height of the building. Um, so, though with that, with that said, um, you know. What, I don't think there is any evidence in the record on which you can base a determination. Of, um, the overall height or number of units in connection with the financial viability of this project. Because there was no business plan submitted. We don't know whether it would be financially viable for the, uh, an apartment building here of ten units on one story. Or if it has to be four floors or six floors. There's literally zero evidence in the record on that score. It was limited to attorney argument to say, ha, well, I think you, uh, I, I hear where you're. Uh, going with your questions and let me just tell you that any reduction in the height, you know, uh, uh, down below four stories would be financially. You know, not feasible for this, for this applicant. So, you know, I'd advise against you, you thinking that way. Um, you know, I, I, that's not persuasive. It's also, it's also not evidence. Um, you know. The thirty, thirty units, um, with, with three stories, uh, the, um. I think, and as I think Commissioner Noonan very appropriately referenced a number of times. Um, it's up to the applicant, it's up to the developer here to come back to us with. A revised proposal that mitigates against these, uh, these hazards. Um, getting the approval of the appropriate authority to remove the parking spaces because that is unsafe. Um, you know, uh, we should all, I understand that, that this is, um, uh, um, not. Um, in, um. Not in the record from our public hearings because those concluded on October thirteen. Uh. But on November twentieth, after we concluded the public hearings, but before we're actually considering this, this application. A sixty-five-year-old woman was struck by a car at this location, in this vicinity, at this intersection. And is still, I believe, still in intensive care. Um, there are, uh, numerous, uh, reports in the record of there being congestion and unsafe conditions. You know, uh, just in the, uh, heavy, uh, traffic volumes, you know, at the, during the heavy times and when, when, when there are events and, you know, it's not. It's not necessarily every day, but, you know, we have a critical mission here to ensure that. Uh, the members of the public and the members of this, this proposed development, once it's built. Um, are not subject to unsafe conditions. We don't make it worse or, you know, uh, uh, in that regard. So. Um, I think that also by reducing the overall scope of the building. Um, and reducing the number of units will also reduce the number of additional cars that will be put on the road to. Also alleviate some of the stress that this, uh, uh, development, the proposed development would, um, would, uh, would foist upon. Uh, this, this neighborhood. So, um, is thirty-six feet the right number? Um. I think that's, uh, uh, a, a, a great, uh, starting place. Um, I think that we should speak in terms of number of units and density. I see Commissioner Noonan one second, um, in, in terms of numbers of units and, and density. And I think we should model it after the, uh, other, uh, affordable developments which have been built and which. Uh, you know, as far as we know, have been financially feasible and successful, right? Why not? Whether those units are above a parking garage or if they're built as townhouse or what? That's up to the developer to figure out for themselves, right? So it's, it's my, uh, position that, um, we simply, uh, engage the conditions of approval. Right? Because we support affordable housing, we uphold our mandate under eight thirty G. We have to alleviate these, we have to mitigate against these, uh, uh, substantial interests in public health, safety and welfare. Um, uh, you know, with conditions, um, and that is removing of the parking. And reducing the scale and scope of the project to mitigate the impact on the historic district. Uh, and, and so in my view, thirty-six feet, fine, it's thirty units. Uh, no more than thirty units, and I think we should put a number on the height, uh, in our judgment. I don't know, thirty-six feet, thirty-six feet is the regulation, or maybe we say forty feet. But, um, you know, the applicant can come back to us with a plan. And if the applicant says, hey, you know what? You said thirty-six, but I really, I, I would like to go to thirty-eight feet. Because I think I can do X, Y, and Z and mitigate. Or maybe they come back to us with a proposal that has this great screening, right? That, 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 that mitigates against the impact and yet, and maybe then they can get thirty-two units or whatever it is. Um, but, but we need to come out with a, with a position here. And so that's, that's why I am, um, I'm, I'm not inclined to support Commissioner Levy, you know, your, your suggestions. Of the, uh, the fifth, I think fifty feet is too, too tall. Um, so, uh, so I just remarked, yeah, but I asked you a direct question. So Commissioner Levy, if you want to just take a moment there and then Commissioner Noonan, I'll come back to you. Uh, you're on mute, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, uh, observing the site, uh, uh, spending some time there the other day, in fact. Um, and, you know, with reference to the, uh, uh, the photos and that were submitted by the applicant. Um, I think if we were to, right now, it's fifty-six feet with a ridge line of sixty-two. Uh, I would suggest reducing both of those by ten, uh, basically making it, uh, forty-six feet high. Uh, with a ridge line not to exceed fifty-two. And visually, while there would still be an impact, it would not be the disaster, uh, that the existing plan would be. And that would be the compromise that I would suggest.
Okay. Commissioner Noonan?
So, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um. I'll, I'll ask the que, direct question of Commissioner Levy, um, if he was about the line of sight in the parking, um, and I'll let him respond to that. I just didn't get a sense of. Where he was coming with that. Um, actually, Commissioner Levy, why, quickly, if you, because I don't remember if you, uh, said, spoke on that.
I did not address it and frankly, that's a Hobson's choice. Um. Because, uh, while I accept that sightlines are very important, particularly, uh, with respect to when we have pedestrians coming up a sidewalk. Or what I often find to be the problem when you have bicyclists on a sidewalk, what I call salmoning, going the wrong way. And you're looking to the left and they come on the sidewalk to your right, there's a real problem there. Uh, but I also know this area that, uh, uh, the parking is very much needed, uh, for both town events, church events, funerals. Uh, and when those events do occur, uh, every spot on Beach Road is used. Uh, and I'd be very surprised, frankly, if our police commission, well, it would be their jurisdiction, but, uh. Um, I, I'd be very surprised that the police commissioner, in fact, to remove these sites, uh, because they are needed. Um, you know, for those various, uh, events. Um, in addition, um, you know, as noted, uh, parked cars, uh, for instance, on the post road. Are not considered to be, uh, uh, obstacles, uh, cap, when used on state highways for purposes of calculating sightlines and distancing. Uh, whether they should or should not, uh, that's another issue. I do know on the, uh, I think it was the Beacon Street, uh, property, uh, there was a very, you know, there a hedge was a problem. And that was a very serious, uh, problem because it was on a, uh, a hairpin turn. Uh, and there it would be without doubt, uh, no matter what you did, a horrendous problem to, with the sightline issues there. Uh, whereas this happens to be along a straightaway. Um, I don't know that it's comparable to the recent accident, which I think is more an issue of having a. Uh, crosswalk in the center of a block and people actually expecting that they're safe in a crosswalk, which is not at an intersection. Um, whereas that would not be the situation here. So I think, uh, I would be inclined, uh, to simply, uh, leave the issue of sightlines. And, uh, whether or not there should be parking there to the, uh, police commission and let them determine, uh, when and if this, uh. Uh, project is, uh, constructed as to whether or not public health and safety from their perspective. Uh, should warrant either the removal or the retention of the spaces. So I would not make a recommendation or condition it upon removal of these spaces. Uh, but simply would trust that the police commission, when and if this project is ever constructed. Uh, would take the appropriate steps at that point as to how best to deal with the situation.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I obviously put the condition there for the reasons I stated, um, and I don't need to reread it all. Um, with respect to the height, um, I. We got, I got to thirty-six feet, um, in working with staff, uh, I think the current project is fifty-six. And each story was ten feet, so that's where I just, you know, simply did the calculation. Um, as to what it is, what would be, um. I, I mean, ultimately, I think you do need to have a. A set height, maybe give or take a few feet, just, um. Whatever new changes they may coming, uh, if they come back to us, um. I may not want a condition based on units, um, the only reason. And the reason I did not was we are going to be out, the height was the issue, um. As to why I, I put the condition there. Um, if they came back with a different footprints with. Not on, not parking underneath, there's some parking underneath and all of a sudden now they're. They're able to get maybe a little extra because of a different footprint, uh, having gone down to, um, three feet as opposed to five feet. I just figured I'd give them that flexibility to come back, um. If there really is a economic feasibility issue, which I don't know about, um, as I think I, I kind of put out there. Um, which leads to the next point about economic feasibility, which is something I think that courts will consider later in an appeal. Um, I don't understand to be the cases, what exactly is economic feasibility? And as beauty is in the eye of the beholder, I'm sure the amount of profits that one wants is in the eye, eye of the developer as well. Um, I have not, um, I talked a little bit with staff about it this morning, um. And in finding, doing some research, I. And in finding, doing some research, I have no, you know, I don't think it's really determined what the economic feasibility would be. So that's another reason why I didn't want to jump into that boat without a paddle as to what the, what developer thinks is feasible, what I would think would be feasible, what, you know, who down the street thinks is feasible. I guess why I put, I think Commissioner Levy had talked about that earlier and I, that seems to be a very open question about.
Feasible, from a business perspective, means not losing money. Right? Financially unfeasible to, to my mind is that the restrictions place the developer in a position where if to, to, if they went forward with the project, they would, they would lose money. Right? And then would, would, would counsel them against, you know, actually going forward, okay? But, you know, the Affordable Housing Statute is intended to create affordable housing, you know, not for, you know, reap profits of developers, right? So to the extent that our conditions of approval, you know, reduce the profits that the developer might make, but doesn't make it financially unfeasible, then, you know, I can see where we're going wrong.
No, I agree. I just, I, I mean, if they develop, if I was counseling a developer and he told me he would be making, you know, with a project like this, a hundred dollars a month, I would be telling him to do something else, so.
Well, that's for another conversation, I mean.
No, I agree. I just, I just throw that out there because, you know, eight thirty G is somewhat market-based, requiring public, some does require some private developers to come forth to do this. So I just throw that out there because it was mentioned earlier.
Well, it's private, right? But the minimum of thirty, the thirty percent affordable units is, is the minimum. I mean, an eight thirty G application and development could be a hundred percent affordable units. They don't have to have any market rate units. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, just in terms of economic feasibility, obviously, there's been no evidence presented one way or the other. We don't know what the developer paid for this property, we don't know what it's going to cost to build it, we don't know how many units will ultimately be there, what the rental will be for the market units. So there's just no evidence and no way that we can really consider that. Where it becomes an issue is when we approve, and the motion is to approve this eight thirty G application, whether or not such conditions as we oppose will make it economically feasible or not viable. Whereas thirty-six feet may or may not make it viable, or forty-six feet makes it viable. That'll be something to be determined and in a, in a different form if there is an appeal.
No, I, I, the record is closed.
Yeah, so my concern is, you know, at a later date, I mean, there's no evidence one way or the other. Will at that stage, it be an issue that either the town or the developer would have the burden of establishing that the condition imposed made the, the project either feasible or not? I don't see that that's an issue for us, but that might be one more in the nature of stamping or a basis for challenging the conditions being a predicate that a developer might have to establish that whatever condition we impose, impose for approval rendered it economically not viable.
The, the issue was out there. The, the applicant and their counsel was aware of this issue and actually made an attorney argument around it and chose not to put in a business plan, chose not to support that with any evidence. It's, it's not our, there's no evidence in the record for us to conclude that we, that, to suggest that what we're considering now would make the project financially not feasible for the developer. There's no evidence in the record to suggest how much profit the developer would reap if it was five stories. You know, so I, I don't think that's an issue we need to worry about at this point. Other, this, this dialogue between us, other members of the commission, Commissioner Bremen?
So, I, I mean, I agree with much of what's been said and I think Commissioner Noonan's motion was very thoughtful. Obviously, once again, we're being asked to weigh the need for affordable housing on, on one hand in the scale with the needs of the community and the concerns of the community in the other. And the law and the courts have put a thumb on the scale for affordable housing for many good reasons that we don't need to discuss. And in fact, there was consensus that this would be a good site for affordable housing. The issues are with traffic congestion, public safety of sightlines, historic character of the adjacent district and parking. I have no objection to the condition that Commissioner Noonan would impose on the motion to approve that would require the applicant to get police commission approval for the removal of the six on-street spaces. I think there's evidence in the record that that is required for adequate sightlines under the ISD standard. And I think that the case law that Commissioner Noonan cited, Cross Street, which was discussed in the application, and then Kaufman and CMB, which are cited in Cross Street, think give us certainly the authority, if not the obligation, to require that as a condition of approval. With respect to the height and the density, I would pose a question to all three commissioners who have spoken about that issue so far, which is, how do we as a commission reach the right number based on evidence in the record? If we are to impose a condition on the, the height of the structure or the number of stories or the number of units that is designed to remedy the evil of the impact, the visual impact of the proposed structure on the historic district? How do we reach that right number? And I think the issue of whether it is economically viable or feasible for the developer to construct a development that has a certain number of stories, fewer or a certain number of units less than it is proposing, is one issue. But an, an even more important issue is, how do we tailor our condition to the evil that we're trying to address, which is the visual impact of this structure on the historic district, which is nearby?
Right. And, and so, a question mark, right? And you're, that, good. And so I think that that is where the thirty-six feet comes from, that is the maximum height allowable, right? Under our regulations, so, so, so a, a property owner could build as of right a structure on that location of thirty-six feet. And so, as Commissioner Noonan explained, that is a, a starting place. And so I think presumptively, because our regulations provide that limit, a building constructed at that height would not have an adverse impact on the historic district the way that a building constructed nearly twice that height would, would have, right? Let's not lose sight of the, of what we're talking about here. The, the regulations have a height restriction of thirty-six feet. This building has a peak of sixty-two, right? So if it was a fifty, fifty-four feet at the, the ridge and sixty-two at the peak. You know, that's a remarkable difference, right? And so, you know, I, I would be amenable to talking about something perhaps slightly larger than that, forty feet. But I don't see that larger than that, that taller than that should be, would, would be appropriate. I think anything taller than forty feet would have an irreparable impact on the historic district. And, and it should be up to the developer to deviate from all of our other regulations into lot area coverage and setbacks and, all right? All of that, because you can do all of that, you can, you can, you can throw all of our other regulations in that regard, you know, to, to the wind. But it's the height which is the real problem here. And, and so I, I think that, you know, thirty-six feet or forty feet is, is really the, the limit of what we should be considering here. Commissioner Noonan?
Yeah, just to add on to that, you know, the essentially difference between, even if you just took Commissioner Levy or mine position, four versus three, three versus four stories. Again, no evidence was really put forth that four stories would not impact the historic district. So I had that to consider as well. Five stories, you can see it. I don't know if four stories can see with respect to the existing trees that are there. But the other aspect of it was, it probably was somewhat of the, maybe the extra push over the, the edge to three stories, which I probably should have outlined a little better, is the trees aren't on their property. So if they were to go down, you lose that screening. There's no mechanism to put it back. So even if you had four stories and somehow you lost trees that would therefore, you know, make this, assuming it wouldn't be, assume it wouldn't be visible with four stories wouldn't be visible because there was, the trees were just protesting, were just obstructing it. You lose those trees on neighboring street, on neighboring properties, now it becomes visible. There's no mechanism to put a screening back up. Three stories, you can say with bare confidence that if it's visible, it's at least within the, the realm of what the neighborhood is. Four stories, again, puts it, I still think it has that impact. It's assuming there's no screening there, it's existing. So that would be maybe why I push back on four stories a bit is, again, there's no evidence to show that as far as my mind, it wouldn't impact. I'd be estimating and guessing. And if you were to make the determination that four stories wouldn't impact the historic district, I think you're necessarily relying upon trees screening the forest, the proposed four-story building that they would not be responsible for putting back up if the trees went down.
Yes. So Commissioner Francis, yes?
That's why I made the point very strongly that he should have to plant the trees on his property because that's exactly the conundrum we're going to run into over time. Thank you.
No, you were wise to ask that question during the hearing.
Yeah, no, that's true, it's true. I, you know, look, well, no, I, so there's two things now that I'm, that I'm, I'm thinking. First of all, Commissioner Noonan, Noonan's statement, I think should be, we should all be considering whether we want to, it's his motion, adopting his, his statement as a collective statement, as reasons for our, if we, if we approve his motion. But, you know, the, the second thing I'm thinking is, is, is that perhaps, perhaps the condition of approval is that the, is that the applicant come back to us with a plan that reduces the size and scale of the building with a plan that mitigates against irreparable harm to the historic district without giving a number. I don't know, that may be just simply too ambiguous. You know, Commissioner Corcoran?
Yeah, I wonder if we have a, an objective standard we might use, which would be the density per acre that other developers have used.
Yeah. So, you know, we have the density. I mean, to Commissioner Levy's point, if you say, you could say thirty units and, and they could build each of the, the units, you know, to, to fill out five or six stories, right? I mean, the unit could be small, could be, could be large. To my point, if you say three stories, a three-story building could be fifty feet tall because each of the stories could be fifteen feet high, right? So, you know, don't speak in terms of stories, speak in terms of an overall height. But to, to, to your point, other developments in town average units per acre. And, you know, I think a reasonable limitation here is, is not relative to, you know, the massing of the building on the property. And that, it is, it is the height, it is the, the sheer scale of the, the height of the building in, in, in this location. And to be clear, you know, when we're talking about these issues, you know, outweigh, weighing the need for affordable housing, it's, I would like to stress the point that it is in this location, right? It's not outweighing the need for affordable housing generally. We don't, we're not saying, making a, a, a statement with respect to affordable housing generally. We're talking about at this location and then constructing conditions which mitigate against those substantial risks to public health, safety and welfare and others we may lawfully consider, right? So, you know, I, I think that, just, just, just talking it through right here and having this discussion, I think we need to put a number on it. I, I think that the number from here is Commissioner Noonan's thirty-six feet. That is the, the, the height limitation in the regulation, which presumptively would not have an undue impact on the historic district because that is what someone could build as of right. I mean, the eight thirty G developer gets to avoid all of the other regulations, right? In terms of mass, lots, coverage area, setbacks and, and the like. And I think that, however they choose to, you know, redesign the, the development to achieve as many units as they are, are, are appropriate in a, in a building on this lot at a max height of thirty-six feet. So, and, and on the other condition of removing the, the parking spaces, Commissioner Bremen, I appreciate your comments and support of that. I mean, I, I think that's, I, I think that is the most appropriate thing to do here to, to ensure that the public health, safety and welfare is protected as well as the historic district. And so, I mean, I, I would recommend to all of us that we approve Commissioner Noonan's motion and adopt his, his arguments and authority as well as discussion that we're having as our collective statement for, for our reasons. And so I'll stop there. Commissioner Levy?
Yes, I think clearly there's a consensus as reflected in Commissioner Noonan's motion that this building is just too high for this particular site. I don't see it so much as dealing with an evil as much as trying to balance the need for affordable housing and the particular situation at this particular site and the potential harm that's posed by a sixty-two-foot ridge line with a fifty-six height as we calculate it. The question is, well, before we get to that, we do need a number. I'm concerned that if we were to simply say, come back to us with a, a lower number, that effectively we've neither approved or we, we haven't really ruled on the application within the applicable time limit. And I think we do have to have a clear condition as part of a ruling of approval. The thirty, you know, to my mind, the number is somewhere between thirty-six and fifty-six. My own feeling is from, you know, looking at the site and visually attempting to figure or looking at the surrounding Syntho Building and so forth, where the, where that balance should lie between the affordable housing and economic opportunity which would accrue to the town by developing this property as opposed to the impact on the neighborhood. the neighborhood and the significant historical interest. Uh, to my mind, that would be the number to splitting the difference, which would be forty-six feet as we calculate the height. Um, could I live with forty-two feet? Uh, that would be within the realm and I think the developer could still, uh, develop this property in the, in an economically viable fashion with that restriction. So that would be, I'd be hired in the thirty-six. I've got flexibility. I would suggest forty-two.
So while, um, other folks are, are thinking, um, I will, um, just take up one of the concepts that you, um, that you raised, which is the, um, the balancing, right, of the, um, of the interests. Uh, and that's really where our strides into, my understanding and my, and my view, um, is where our strides, uh, in the nature of affordable housing come into play. Um, you know, it's one thing to say we can, you know, lawfully consider the impact of the historic district. Um, and it's another to say, uh, what do we need to do to, to, um, you know, um, uh, make changes, uh, you know, to, to promote and support, you know, uh, uh, affordable housing. Um, you know, it's my view that, uh, under the, the case law, that, um, the assessment is, um, you know, if, uh, there have been substantial strides in, uh, in, 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 in the development of, of affordable housing, promotion of affordable housing like we have with our regulations and the trust fund and, um, the kinds of things that Commissioner Noonan, uh, recited and that Mr. Barnhart testified to. And he actually, uh, um, quoted, uh, one of Mr. Barnhart's, um, responses, right, to my, to my questions where I asked explicitly, have we made substantial progress? And, and he was resolute and, and as our, uh, expert here in town, um, you know, said, yes, we have. And he rattled off different ways that we've done so. And so, um, you know, with that as background, um, I think we therefore can take a, um, that, you know, the view that, um, uh, the, the development here, uh, um, uh, in, in, in impact to historic resources, uh, um, is, is permanent. It's irreparable. I mean, if we make a decision, if we, if we, if we don't, i- 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 if we, if we don't do the right thing here and we, we suddenly, um, you know, ha- have this development that just, you know, intrudes and vitiates and, and, and impacts, uh, negatively impacts, uh, you know, the historic, um, district, the way that we are articulating here and the way that we heard from, uh, everyone, from, you know, members of the public to State Senator, uh, Tony Wong, to the Chair of our Historic District Commission and an architect and an expert and so forth, um, uh, you know, we, we can't go back. We, we, we can't go back. And so, you know, when you, when you take those competing interests and, and, and seek to, um, to balance those and to come up with a, with a decision, um, you know, I, I believe that we err on the side of caution. And, um, I, I think that, um, uh, we are supporting affordable housing. We are, um, protecting the public safety by requiring the removal of the parking spaces and we're protecting the, the historic resources of the town by saying you can only build to a maximum of, you know, come back with a proposal at, at X. Now, do I think by the same token that if we said, uh, forty feet, uh, uh, and the developer came back to with the, to us with a plan and said, you know, okay, maybe it's not forty and maybe it's forty-two, uh, or whatever? And we believe that we, you know, our new plan will mitigate those, um, those hazards and, and, and will, um, you know, protect the, uh, impact on the historic district. Like, I don't know. Um, might be something that we, we look at. But I, I think that, and I would add, and I would urge the commission to, you know, seriously, um, consider, uh, that, um, you know, w- w- we need to, we need to ensure that our decision protects the impact to the historic district and our historic resources of our town. Um, and I, that was a bit of a sort of, you know, tough, but, uh, hopefully that, that made, um, some, some sense. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, and this may be an area the Commissioner Berman is more familiar with, uh, and I'll defer to him after I get done. But one of my concerns is thinking down the road. Um, the existing, um, motion calls for a thirty-six-foot limit. Um, you know, if, uh, there's an appeal taken and it's determined that that is too restrictive, uh, then we will have a fifty-six-foot-high, uh, project. Um, so I think, thinking long-term, uh, the approach should be to try and come up with a number, uh, that would be sustainable and acceptable all the way around, uh, one that the developer can work with and would want to proceed with and one that a court might find would be a realistic, uh, uh, balancing of the competing interests, uh, you know, the impact on the historical district with, uh, what I think we all feel would be that this is an ideal spot, uh, to have affordable hu- housing and, uh, uh, to promote it in this very area. Um, it's not on, it's not east of North Benson Road like so many other projects. Uh, it would allow for additional economic, uh, you know, or, or affordable housing in, uh, uh, this part of town where it should be. Um, but I think we need to come up with a balance between those two interests and I think thirty-six might be too low, uh, and we'd end up with fifty-six. So that's why my suggestion is come up with something in the middle. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, so let's have a few final comments on this and then I, I, I think I have a, a procedure to, um, at least get us, uh, moving along here. Um, I see Commissioner Noonan's hand up. Anyone else? Commissioner Noonan?
Um, yeah, it's just a quick response. Um, yeah, as I said, I, you know, I based thirty-six not just on our regulations but also the actual application that was put forth. If three stories was going to do it, you know, using, uh, the application and the site that they provided, that's what it calculated out to be. Um, when you're dealing with, you know, stories and as I already said, we think we need to actually have a, um, a foot, you know, foot requirement. It's not just talking in realm of stories. But my sense is, and I could be completely wrong, is it's either probably going to be, you know, thirty-six, thirty-eight feet or forty, forty-six or forty-seven feet, kind of in the middle doesn't help because that's half a story. So, and maybe I'm wrong because it has to do with, uh, lobbies being different or under, underground, um, not underground, but, um, parking, uh, garage on the first level. Um, the only other thought I had too is if we go the route of, you know, thirty, uh, thirty-six feet, forty feet, forty-two feet, maybe its language could be maybe a catch-all kind of ambiguous where we say with respect to the second condition, um, that the, the application come forth, three stories, height not to exceed, uh, insert number of feet or, uh, an application that will, um, address the concern of the, uh, impact of the historic district, kind of doing both. I'm not sure if jumping on a fence will, is a good balancing act in that respect, but maybe we can say three stories at forty feet or an application that sufficiently, uh, mitigates or, uh, remedies the impact on the historic district with respect to height.
Yeah, so, so, um, I, 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 having talked it through, do not like the alternative at the end of that. I think we can make it end. I think we can say three stories, no, no, no taller than thirty-six or forty, which mitigates against the impact. Okay? Right. Commissioner Francis?
Um, that, that's good. And our regulation in ten-point-eleven does say thirty-six, three stories or forty feet, whichever is less. So I think you're heading in the right direction.
We could say there are three stories, thirty-six feet, whichever is more, given that.
Yeah, well, ten-eleven says three stories or forty feet, whichever is less. So, right. Making it forty feet would be really giving something. Not that they have to comply, but if they did.
Yeah. So, so, so that's, that's my recommendation. And, and, and so, um, you know, I, I admittedly, uh, you know, we've, we've taken a bit of a meandering path here, but this has been, been very good. I mean, we've had a, a rather, um, you know, intense dialogue. Um, I mean, Commissioner Noonan, it's, it's your motion. It's on the floor. Um, I think you've got, uh, a potential friendly amendment from, from me to, um, you know, uh, say that, 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 to go to forty feet to, um, to Commissioner Levy's point, um, i- if, if you're inclined and, you know, um, but I, I would also support your, your motion as, as it stands, um, for all the reasons that you've said and that we've articulated here. Um, and, you know, Commissioner Levy, uh, you, 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 you probably have a friendly amendment to, to propose, uh, that's something different.
Yes, um, and just, um, I would stay away to number of floors. I would just focus on height at this point. I mean, it, the original application, uh, I think was, you know, basically five stories, um, you know, which again, uh, I have real problems with. Uh, if we were to set the height at one that allowed him, depending on, assuming ten feet a story, uh, plus a little extra for parking garage, uh, he might be able to get four feet in, uh, four stories in within forty-two or forty-six feet. So I'd, um, I don't know that the stories are something we want to get into. Uh, my concern is just the height of the building and the visual impact. Um, so, I mean, where my forty-six came from was I assume approximately ten feet per story and, uh, you know, forty-six, uh, if he wants to squeeze in four floors, uh, that's his prerogative. But, uh, uh, that's where I was coming up with the forty-six. Uh, that's the balance, so. Stay away from stories on it.
Okay, Commissioner Berman?
I just noticed based on Commissioner Francis' comment about section ten-point-eleven of our regulations, it does say, uh, forty feet, um, excuse me, three stories or forty feet, whichever is less. So perhaps forty feet, um, has some interest in the regulations.
It, it, it does, it does. I mean, that, that would be, um, uh, the, the, the limit of my friendly amendment to, uh, Commissioner Noonan's, uh, motion, which, which would just simply be to replace the thirty-six feet with forty feet.
Would you mirror the language itself in the regulation, Mr. Chair? Or just stick to forty feet?
I, I, I think your, um, your, um, articulation is, is just fine. I don't think we need to deal with the language of the regulation. Um, I, I, I mentioned the regulation, um, because, um, as I, as I said earlier, presumptively, um, a, a landowner and the, the owner of a parcel in this zone and, and this, this lot has the right to build a structure that meets those regulations. And so presumptively that, we believe of the town, that does not, will not, would not negatively impact the historic district and the historic resources of the town, right? That, that, that makes logical sense. Um, and so, um, you know, suggesting that it's for forty feet, I think makes, makes logical sense and that they can do so and build, you know, however many units that is appropriate. Um, as I said, uh, um, they can do so by, um, you know, avoiding, uh, you know, all of the other regulations in terms of, uh, area coverage and setbacks and all of that kind of thing. Um, you know, our cer- certainly our regulations would, would not permit the construction of a thirty-unit apartment building on this parcel, uh, you know, otherwise. They, uh, have that opportunity to do that under the state statutes, given everything else that we're talking about. And so, so that would be it. And, and, and frankly, um, I think at the, at the moment, um, you know, Commissioner Noonan, you know, it's, it's your motion. You can either accept that or not. If Commissioner Levy has, uh, a proposed friendly amendment, then you can accept that or not. But then, you know, ultimately we need to vote on your motion and if it passes, then we're done. If it fails, then we need another motion. Um, and so, uh, you know, that, that, that could be, um, brought by, by anyone else, right? But, um, you know, so, so, so that's, uh, that's, I think, where we stand. And, um, you know, I think we've talked through the issues.
May I ask one question?
Yeah.
Are, are we going to require any screening as, as he has absolutely no trees on this property or is that going to present too many obstacles?
I, I don't think that the screening, um...
You know, because our regs do...
Somebody else wants to answer that. I mean, I, I, I have, I, I have a response, but Commissioner Noonan?
Yeah, I would think if we, I would be, I think, comfortable if we mirror the regulation that you cited, Commissioner Francis, about forty feet, three stories, forty, at least keep it at forty feet, that even if the screening and the trees were knocked down tomorrow, um, that they would not, even without the screening, that the, uh, forty, uh, forty feet max would be, um, would not, uh, impact the historic district as the application is currently, particularly because it's in our regulations, um, next nearby. So that's why I, I'm not concerned with a screening if we have the, uh, height be forty feet or less.
Okay. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to address screening because if those trees go down, whether the building's twenty feet high or forty feet high, you're going to see it and it's going to be an eyesore. Um, so, and I don't think anybody's going to put in fifty-foot trees. So with that lot and that configuration, I don't think the screening is something that we can effectively address.
Very good. So with that, um, what do you want to do, Tom?
Yeah, so I would, uh, accept the, um, amendment of making it forty feet or less, um, as, uh, Commissioner Francis identified in the regulations. Um, I think that's a, a fair number to be using at this point, considering everything we've talked about, in my judgment.
Okay. Commissioner Francis, you accept that amendment to the motion?
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. Um, all right. With that, does it, does anyone else have any, uh, final comments? Uh, Mr. Went, do we need to make it more clear that we're adopting Commissioner Noonan's, uh, arguments in our, our, our conversation as a collective statement or is that something I'm misremembering?
John Mew, Jim?
Sorry. Um, it's, it's not part of the motion, but it's understood, I believe, from your previous comments that, and, and you should probably articulate that when you call the vote, that in addition to the motion with the, uh, proposed conditions, that there's also, uh, includes the adoption of Mr. Noonan's statement as the collective statement of the commission.
Okay. Um, what he said. Um, so, uh, that, so, and, and so, um, I'll just throw it open one, one more time to, for, if, if anyone has, uh, any, any final comments before then, um, Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, um, before we vote on that friendly amendment, uh, I would suggest that we consider one with a height of forty-two feet and eliminate the condition with respect to the parking and simply defer that to, uh, the police commission.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Noonan?
Uh, I mean, respectfully, Commissioner Levy, I would, uh, stick with what I've had, uh, so far based on what we've discussed. If the commission sees otherwise, I, I certainly don't want to stand in the way of two feet, but, um, I'm comfortable with where we are with, especially the, the two feet. I'm comfortable with where we are with, especially the, the two feet, I mean, uh, but especially the, uh, line of sight that we discussed earlier as well.
Very good. Good. Um, any, any other, uh, comments and questions before we vote? Very good. Uh, well, I, I support the, um, uh, the amendment, uh, and I, I'm also, um, I also feel very strongly about the, uh, the line of sight. And would urge commissioners to, um, approve the, uh, the motion. So, uh, with, with that, um, I'll, I'll call the vote. Uh, the motion on the table is to, uh, approve with the conditions, uh, as, as articulated, um, that, um, and to, and also to adopt, uh, Commissioner Noonan's, um, remarks as well as our discussions here as our collective statement in support of the motion. Okay? All in favor, say aye or raise your hands. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Are there any opposed? Okay. No, one, one, uh, opposed, Commissioner Levy?
For the record, just, I think I've expressed my opinions, uh, and, uh, though in fact, I do favor, uh, having an eight thirty G application approved at this site. Uh, my no is only that I think our condition is a little too restrictive. So.
Very good. Uh, understood. And I, so I, I believe, uh, that, um, with respect to the zoom, that I've, I've captured that correctly. So it, it, uh, it passes with six votes to one, and the sole, uh, no vote is, uh, Commissioner Levy with no abstentions. Okay? Very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item of business is, uh, in the item C. It's the zoning regulation, uh, application of the Affordable Housing Committee to amend section six point zero of this regulation, uh, accessory apartments. So, Mr. Went, you've, uh, summarized this once or, 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 uh, maybe deferred summary because we, we tackled it, uh, previously. It's, we have other business. Um, I personally am not prepared to go forward. I'm hoping that, uh, others will support a table on this one until January, given the work that we had to do on the, the other, the other items tonight. So, uh, it, 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 is anyone willing to, uh, move to table this time?
Yeah, I would move to table. Um, I think we need to discuss further, uh, the impact, particularly as it relates to perhaps extending this to other zones other than what's already in there. So I would move to table.
Motion to table by Commissioner. Is there a second on that, Commissioner Corcoran? A second? Yeah, thank you. Um, I probably got a little ahead of myself on the explanation, but I appreciate that. As I'm sure, uh, others do as well. Anyone else have any other comments or questions on the motion to table assignment? Seeing none in favor, say aye, raise your hand. Okay, any opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion to table unanimously. Commissioner New, you, uh, sorry, thought I, did, did you, uh, approve the motion to table?
I did.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Okay, next item is compliances. Four twenty eight Old Stratfield Road, zoning compliance application of Fidelity Street Johns Lodge number three to establish a charitable institution use in an existing building in the neighborhood design district.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went again for the record. Um, this subject site is on the northerly side of Old Stratfield Road in a neighborhood design district. If you're familiar with, it's over near Leanne's, uh, Tretor, if you're familiar with that. There's a Teddy Bear Corner, uh, daycare facility across the street. Um, this building was most recently occupied by a retail consignment shop. Uh, the masons who recently sold their site on Beach Road that we had just discussed are looking to establish their lodge at this building. Uh, pursuant to section twelve point five point ten, charitable institutions are permitted use in the district. The application, um, represents a proposed change in use from retail, uh, to that use. They are proposing a maximum of fifty seats, uh, for any given meeting. Uh, parking for an assembly use such as this is one space per five seats, therefore ten parking spaces are required. While that presently striped, the site survey indicates the parking lot can accommodate twelve spaces. They generally don't have that many folks, uh, at a particular meeting. There's no kitchen, um, in, in this building. So there won't be any, uh, food preparation, as it said in their, uh, in their letter. They're just looking for a new location in which to hold their meetings. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion on this? Motion to approve by Commissioner Levy? Yes? Seconded by Commissioner Corcoran. Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Noonan? Yes? Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I, uh, clearly they're moving. They need a place to, uh, hold their meetings and this would be an appropriate site.
Commissioner Noonan?
Nothing else to add?
Anyone else have any other comments? This is, uh, this is allowed, um, and, and it's no reason to deny this. Okay? In favor, say aye or raise your hand. Aye? Any abstentions? Uh, I'm sorry, any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, excellent. The, uh, compliance is approved unanimously. Next item is our public hearing. Um, we have one item on the agenda. And as I mentioned, uh, beginning of the meeting, um, uh, public hearing, the applicant, uh, will present, uh, their, uh, their application and their proposal. Members of the public will be heard during public comment, uh, after the applicant finishes. And then after the public comment is concluded, the applicant will have a period for rebuttal. In this Webex system, there's a chat box, uh, when we, uh, as we go forward, any members of the public wishing to be heard, you can just, so indicate in the chat box to, uh, Ms. Harrigan. And, uh, we'll put you on the list and call in the order that you sign up. Uh, if you don't have to, to the chat, I'll also, uh, call for public comment. And at that time, all you need to do is just let me know that you want to speak and we'll get you, uh, we'll get you a, a, a place in line. I will note that, um, it's, uh, just about nine fifteen and, uh, we have curfew at ten P M. Uh, I don't know how lengthy, um, the, uh, applicant's presentation will be or how long public comment will go on, but, uh, we will adjourn at ten if we're not finished. Uh, the matter will be continued over to our next, uh, regular, uh, hearing date. But, um, we'll adjust that if and when we get there. Uh, but just so that everybody is aware, we will adjourn at, uh, ten P, ten P M. So, um, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to, I'll call the item, thirty one thirty five Eastern Turnpike. Special exception application of Sacred Heart University pertaining to the construction of a hockey arena in the Design Research, uh, Residence Three, uh, R three zone, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law firm of Fitzpatrick, Frey and Bologna. We have offices at seventeen thirty five Post Road. I'm here this evening representing Sacred Heart University, the owner of the former G E headquarters at thirty one thirty five Eastern Turnpike. I'd like to give the commission a quick overview of the site before referencing the specific application before the commission tonight. Property was purchased by G E in nineteen seventy one from, I believe, St. Vincent's, which had intended to construct a hospital on the property. After G E's purchase, subsequently made a gift of thirty acres of valuable open space, uh, known to me as the Cascades, to the town of Fairfield. Property encompasses approximately sixty eight acres. The property is located in the designed research district, which includes as permitted uses, those uses permitted in the underlying zone, which in this case is the R three zone. The R three zone has a minimum lot size requirement of twenty thousand square feet for residential building lots. The R three zone also includes a university use as a permitted use via special exception approval. Property at present contains three primary buildings. The first building, known as the East Building, located to the east, closest to the entrance, a three-story building constructed in nineteen seventy three and containing, per the assessor's office, hundred and seventy two thousand, three hundred and sixty six square feet with structured parking underneath. The building is essentially a rectangle, surrounds a single atrium. The second building is located to the west of that building and is a three-story building over structured parking. That building includes two courtyards, contains approximately two hundred and ninety one thousand, six hundred and forty seven square feet. Third building is a three-story, twenty-eight-room conference center located to the west of the two primary buildings. This building is constructed into the side of the hill, was built in nineteen eighty four, contains approximately sixty two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three square feet. There are seven hundred and seventy-six parking spaces on site, including one hundred and seven surface spaces and six hundred and sixty-nine structured spaces. The specific application before the commission tonight proposes the construction of a hockey arena. The area to the north of the East Building slopes toward the Mary Parkway. It is in this area directly adjacent to the East Building that the hockey arena will be located. The presentation to the commission tonight will include Kevin Herrick, an architect with the SLAM Collaborative. He's part of Kevin's presentation. He'll be introducing Mr. Tom Daley, an engineer with Malone and McRum, and Dan Grantis, a landscape architect with the SLAM Collaborative. Subsequently, I'll be introducing Mr. Michael Galante of Frederick P. Clark Associates. I will then conclude the presentation. Before introducing Mr. Herrick, I'd just like to outline a few facts about the proposed arena. The arena is a state-of-the-art facility, will contain fixed seating for three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one persons as well as room for five hundred standees. The arena will be utilized by the university's hockey, ice hockey team, which I believe did make its first ever appearance in the national top twenty list last year, as well as the university's, uh, women's team. The average attendance for the men's game, uh, games which are played, I believe, at the Wonderland of Ice in Bridgeport, is less than five hundred people a game. The women's games are presently paid, played at the ice rink in Shelton. The arena will also be utilized by university club teams, intramurals, figure skating and broom hockey, whatever that may be. Uh, there have been discussions with the town of Fairfield and there will be town of Fairfield recreational use as well as the use of the arena by the Fairfield High's boys and girls hockey teams. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Herrick. Kevin is an architect with the SLAM Collaborative, is head of the SLAM Education Practice Section. The SLAM Collaborative has offices in Glastonbury, Connecticut. Kevin?
Derek, you are unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, yeah. Let me share my screen here. I'm gonna land them, get my finger crossed here.
Kevin, we can't see anything yet, but it looks like it's starting to come up.
I'm coming. Yep, I'm coming, yeah.
There you go.
So we, we do see your, um, your notes. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, um, thank you, Bill. Uh, as Bill mentioned, I'm Kevin Herrick, a principal with the S L A M Collaborative. Uh, we're going to spend the next fifteen minutes or so presenting the design of the proposed arena, totaling one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty square feet. About half of that is, uh, the area in its footprint for lot coverage. The facility priority use is Division One hockey, which Sacred Heart excels at and is making a national name for themselves. Last year, winning the inaugural Connecticut Ice Tournament, uh, which included Yale, UConn and Quinnipiac. Uh, they also achieved a top twenty ranking for the first time in school history, which is very exciting. The program is made up of third, three thousand, one hundred and twenty-one fixed seats. There's room for five hundred more standing spectators. Uh, a single sheet of ice can also, uh, provide many other, uh, provide for many other programs, uh, including figure skating, youth hockey, club hockey, uh, and broom hockey, uh, for the student body. The building will accommodate numerous locker rooms at different levels and sizes. Uh, first-class, first-class athletic training rooms, fitness and conditioning spaces, spectator suites on the upper level along with the coaches' offices. Concourse will also have appropriate concessions for the spectators. Uh, and the arena provides both equal facilities for men and women. Uh, this aerial view of, uh, West Campus, uh, approximately one quarter, one quarter mile from the Park Avenue campus is being transformed from a corporate world headquarters for a Fortune five, fifty company into a model contemporary campus, providing first-class learning environments which have included active learning classrooms for team-based activities, maker spaces for hands-on immersive prototype making, co-working spaces. Associated with this, we've also been doing some renovations, uh, which have opened up, uh, high-tech labs in classrooms for things like cybersecurity, augmented reality, virtual reality and artificial intelligence. Those are some of the things that have been going on over the last couple of years that many of you have seen us come here before. Today, we are here presenting the idea of a, of, uh, a new facility, which is West Campus's first expansion, uh, which, as I mentioned, dedicated to, uh, tier, delivering tier-one facilities for Division One hockey and other ice-related activities. Often when presenting designs like this, we build up all the parts of the story, which lead to a climatic animation and flyover. And thinking about this, uh, we thought it best to give you a quick, uh, overall aerial view of the facility and then we'll circle back, uh, with some of the details, uh, and, and fill those in. I'll, uh, I'll narrate this short video, um, before I hand the presentation over to our civil engineer, Tom Daley, and landscape architect, Dan Grantis, who will briefly speak about the site design. After that, I'll come back and fill in some of the details about the interior of the arena. So, so this view here, you can see the, uh, the South Lobby project, uh, which we presented to you. Well, it's probably been close to two years now. That is ready for opening, uh, in the next month or so, which is very exciting. See that under the laser pointer, uh, a new, uh, entry drop-off, uh, right in front of that is, uh, an important component, uh, here. This is going to provide, provide a, uh, a much-needed, uh, grand entrance for the West Campus, um, which didn't exist when it was a corporate world headquarters. It was all about getting people into the structured, um, parking and then they would just go up elevator cores, uh, into their workstations. Well, now, uh, shuttle buses will drop off people at this main entrance. Um, however, for this facility, the South Lobby also plays an important role. Uh, you can see, uh, how the structured parking is accessed in the east, um, by the, underneath the laser pointer, and then also in the West Building. And as fa- uh, fans and spectators will come out of the structured parking in the West Building, they'll collect in the South Lobby and then gather down a public corridor, being joined by people parking in the east and head out to the arena. Where the arena itself comes to you?
Mr. Herrick, if you're speaking, I think you're breaking up. Mr. Herrick, if you're speaking, I think you're breaking up.
Uh, sorry about that. How are we doing now? I was paused, actually.
There you go.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
I was not, I was not speaking while it was moving. Um, so, from this view, we're actually seeing what we would call the back of the arena. Uh, this, the, uh, basically the service courtyard, uh, where the, uh, chiller equipment is for the ice-making, uh, for the, for the hockey arena. There's also some air handling equipment on this side of the building. You can start to see how the building is built into the hill, uh, which keeps the roof significantly lower than even the lowest East Building by some thirty-five feet. Uh, this connector here underneath the laser pointer shows, uh, a connection that goes back to, uh, the parking and the South Lobby building. Uh, people will enter from a renovated corridor in the East Building, uh, parking and come into the concourse level. Down an escalator onto the concourse level. I'm gonna advance a little bit further. There you can see where we're swimming over to the north side. Uh, the, uh, the glass that you see, um, let me get my laser. The glass that you see will face the Merritt Parkway. Uh, here you can really see how much lower the, uh, arena is than the East Building. Uh, from this view, you can actually, you can see the service access and also the fire lane, providing added. Opportunity for, uh, perimeter, uh, access for the fire, for firefighting. Uh, underneath my laser pointer, you see a covered loading area, uh, shielded from view. Uh, and also allowing for loading and unloading, um, undercover. Uh, from this easterly view, you start to see, uh, a second, uh, entrance into the facility, um, which is, uh, access from the students. Who will be coming via shuttle bus from the Park Avenue campus. They'll be dropped off here, uh, near the planted red circle, enter into the arena on the concourse level. The buses that will continue around up and turn around in a number of opportunities they have on, on West Campus and circle back, uh, to the Park Avenue campus. Uh, right now, shuttle buses provide services to the existing facilities during the day on an increment of about seven or eight minutes. Um, uh, and, uh, about seven or eight minutes. Uh, the parking that you see a little bit to the left here is, uh, both some short-term parking and accessible parking. Uh, providing on-grade access to the, to the concourse. And I will give you, I think here's a good view. You can see once again how, how much shorter the arena is from the East Building, nestling into the hill. Really just the only face, um, facing the public is out towards the Merritt Parkway, which is off to the right here in this view. Ultimately coming down to the front door of the arena. So at this point, uh, hopefully that gives you a very quick overview of the entire facility. We're gonna now fill in with some of the details. I'm gonna turn it over to our civil engineer, uh, Tom Daley, who is a principal with Malone and McBroom. And I'm gonna put Tom's detail sheet up here for you. Tom, you with us?
I am. Uh, thank you, Kevin. Um, for the record, Tom Daley with Malone and McBroom. I am professional engineer. Uh, we have been working on this project for, uh, quite some time. And a big part of that was actually working our way through the inland wetlands, um, application process. Uh, as you can see, this plan, this is our utility plan. On, on this plan is, uh, nor, uh, the Merritt Parkway is running along the top of the map. Uh, so to give you orientation, the existing GE buildings are down at the bottom. Uh, one of the things I would notice as we, or let you notice, but also as we come and start working on this project is. Uh, typically a project of this size, we would anticipate a parking or impervious pavement area to be almost equal to size, the size of the building. Just to accommodate existing, um, parking or the need for parking. But by utilizing the underground parking on the existing GE facility, uh, it really made our job a lot easier in terms of handling stormwater. Uh, but we are picking up all our stormwater. Uh, we're running off into two dedicated, uh, stormwater basins. You can see in the, um, the upper left-hand corner of this plan. Those basins are designed for the two through the hundred-year storm. In addition to that, we also did meet the, um, DEP's water quality volume in those basins. And in addition to that, we met the, uh, deep, the, um, the wetlands requirement where we take the ten-year storm. And we ratchet it back to the two-year storm. Uh, we did use the new NOAA rainfall event, so we are, uh, I guess, hyper-conservative in terms of using those rainfall events. But, uh, we also worked closely with Bill Kenny's office to develop a very elaborate planting plan on these basins to the point where we. They're really gonna almost function like, uh, created wetlands, uh, with that. Um, but we're routing all the drainage down through there. Uh, we had some work to do. We have to relocate some utilities to get out of the way, the existing. Uh, or excuse me, get out of the way for the proposed building. Uh, but we've worked with, uh, both the Fairfield WPCA and Aquarian Water to confirm that there's sufficient capacity to handle this project. And, uh, we've also, um, I can tell this commission is, we've worked through all the engineering comments with the town of Fairfield. And it's our understanding that in fact, uh, we've addressed those comments to their satisfaction. And that's the general overview of the engineering. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Daley, before you, before you leave, um, could you just talk for a moment about, um, the existing conditions, um, compared to? The, um, bill conditions with respect to, uh, rainwater and runoff from the site to adjacent properties?
Sure. So, uh, as of today, as I think Bill and Kevin indicated, this is kind of a long slope. So this, this runs down, it basically runs all the way down towards the Merritt Parkway. And on this campus, basically, uh, they built stone-lined channels to funnel all the water around the project. But everything gets down to the, basically, I would say, the, the upper left-hand corner of the map. There's some ponds off-site there, and all the ditches and swales run all the water down through there. Uh, we are not discharging any new water to those channels. We're picking up all our water and sending it down to these two stormwater basins. And we did an analysis point at the, at the outlet or the ponds over in the corner. And under existing conditions, we analyzed how much water was getting down into that area. Um, and under proposed conditions, we have modeled that to show that at no storm event, uh, are we increasing the peak runoff rate for, um, in that location. And ultimately, this goes into a large wetland corridor and heads towards the Merritt Parkway. I don't, uh, Mr. Chair, I don't believe there's any residential properties. It ultimately goes towards the Merritt Parkway over there.
And, and just for, for clarity, the Merritt Parkway is, uh, you know, looking at this map in this, uh, this, um, situation, the Merritt Parkway is, is, uh, up, right?
Correct. It's parallel along the top of the map. You're absolutely correct. Yes. And then what you can see and see off-page is there's some large ponds that ultimately that water gets into and heads off to a wetland corridor.
Mm-hmm. And, and could you just, uh, orient, uh, all of us to where the nearest residential properties are in relationship to, to the development?
Kevin, would you be able to scroll back to that aerial? I think that might give the commission an orientation.
Uh, where, where do you wanna be?
No, that first, the first one you did, the good, I think the one where each other, two campuses, I think that, yeah, that gave a good zoom out. So, there you go. So unfortunately, the orientation is opposite here. It's rotated. But, um, as you can see, the ponds are located there. And Bill, correct me wrong, but is that some of the open space that was ultimately dedicated, um, where those ponds are?
That's correct, Tom.
Correct. So I can't even, actually, I can't even see any residential properties. Even close proximity to, to those, that open space, based upon this aerial.
Right.
All the, all the residential there is much higher in the grade and actually above, or I guess if you look on the plan on the right, that's all well above us in, in topography.
Okay. And so just for clarity, the square that you've drawn on this, uh, map here is the proposed, uh, hockey rink.
That's correct.
Circle, uh, is, uh, you've circled the, the ponds into which those channels directed the runoff from the existing GE facility.
Correct. And our, we're, we're nestling our new stormwater basins right in the edge, that kinda edge between the meadow and the woods there.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, they go off into these dual ponds and ultimately into this larger wetland. Correct, Kevin. There you go.
Got it.
Not drawing the scale.
No, buddy.
Right. Uh, okay. All right, good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I guess, Kevin, it's back to you.
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, thanks, Tom. Um, at this point, I'd like to introduce one of my fellow principals, Dan Grantis. Uh, Dan is a licensed landscape architect and has been involved in many of the Sacred Heart, uh, projects that you've seen. Um, Dan, you're gonna, uh, take it away and describe, uh, some of the landscape and ground plane, uh, features of the project.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin, and thank you for listening to us tonight. Um, as Kevin said, for the record, my name is Dan Grantis. I'm a principal at SLAM, and also I lead the Landscape Architectural and Planning Studio for the SLAM Collaborative. Um, the entry sequence in the, into the site is pretty strong. We come through the existing GE gate, uh, which is sort of beyond the upper right of this graphic. And then we come into the drop-off area that Kevin described. Um, and then we created this really cool pedestrian, uh, plaza that creates a sense of arrival into the building. Um, it has very, uh, lots of places to sit and gather. It has, uh, the Sacred, Sacred Heart mascot in the center of the plaza. And there's also a roof plaza that's kind of off to the right as you enter, and that's over the service area. So we made that structured landscape over top of, uh, structure below. Um, and we like that configuration because there's the large, the people gatherer that's more, um, public space. And then there's a little more private space off to the right for people to gather and wait for people. Um, so that's our sense of arrival to the place, which we think is really important to get a good sense of arrival, to build a sense of place, that builds a sense of community. Um, some of the photos to the bottom left of this graphic are images of what that arrival sequence, uh, looks like. And to the upper right, you can see the sort of, um, a representative image of some of the plantings that Bill Keeney, our environmental scientist. Is providing for, uh, the existing rock swell, which we will remain, we're just making it more attractive. So lots of benches, planters, really activating that space. As Kevin described, there's a service area that's one level down. Uh, to make the, uh, service area sort of visually disconnected from the project. And then we have an utility yard in the back, similarly, uh, you know, tucked to the side, um, and out of harm's way and view. You can see the detention basins labeled that, uh, Tom had talked about to the upper left. Uh, we also integrated a riprap slope, uh, working with our geotechnical engineer. And the purpose of that is to get, connect to the existing grade as quickly as possible. Um, you know, it's like parking a little battleship on the site, so we wanted to limit the, um, limit the disturbance of the existing condition as much as possible. And that's a really creative technique, uh, to make that happen. And, you know, visually inaccessible from the exterior of the site. Uh, we do have a parking area that we're adding. There's thirty-six total spaces, ten accessible. And those little pathways that you see are all designed to be accessible, meaning that they're not graded, uh, over five percent. And actually, we use four-point-nine percent now just to take into account construction, uh, tolerances. Uh, so that we know that they will be accessible after they're constructed. Uh, there are four additional parking spaces down at the service area for service use. Um, so a really, uh, well-thought-out site and another great project that Sacred Heart University is bringing to your attention. So I'm here if you have any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Corcoran. Yeah, and apologies to all the commissioners, you know, in these screen share views, I can't see anybody. So unless you speak up like Commissioner Corcoran just did, I don't know to recognize you. So, Commissioner Corcoran.
So, um, Mr. Grantis, can we go back to that aerial shot you just flashed on and off the screen?
Sure. Kevin's running the show, so he can, he can do that.
Yeah, right there. So right now, um, the GE complex, the old complex, is pretty much screened completely from the Merritt Parkway. Um, will this new addition also be screened from the view from the Merritt Parkway?
Well, it'll be below the existing buildings as Kevin had described. Um, so I mean, I have to take a closer look, but I believe there is, like, plenty of screening between the merit and the property. There is gonna be the removal of those evergreens that you see, um, next to the existing GE building. But what I can say is it's significantly lower than the addition, you know, existing building. So if you can't see them. Um, I don't believe that you'll be able to see our building, but that would require further, further study. That's a great question.
Actually, I can, uh, I, I can also speak to that. We do have some video, but I don't have that today. But most of the screening does actually come from the, uh, you know, forested area behind the rest area off the exit. So that's actually even, uh, we, even in the wintertime when the, when the leaves are down. Uh, you're, you're not even able to see the evergreens that are up near the building. So we feel pretty comfortable that there's gonna be a fair amount of screening. But it's gonna be very similar to what you have now, because most of that screening does come from, uh, the, the landscape right next to the merit. Not, not so much what's next to the buildings.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move on?
Actually, um, I have a, a question for Mr. Daley. I wasn't able to get my. My hand up for that.
Okay.
Um, so, no, my question is, uh, on that, uh, the aerial view that showed the two campuses. Um, I think we had a letter from one of the homeowners who's kind of downhill from the, uh, from the project. Yeah, that, that's the one. Um, if you see, uh, going, uh, towards the top left, there's a line of houses along the merit there. It's actually lower than the, um, than the GE complex. And I think they're the ones, they were worried because they get a lot of runoff now that runs through their backyards. And I'm wondering if, if this project could make things worse for them. Do you see where I mean?
If you could help me steer the pointer, um, that would be helpful, because I'm.
So if you follow the, the Merritt Parkway towards the upper left?
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep going, keep going past the bridge and a little bit further. And you, so right, right above where you are now, you can see a line of houses. And, and they are lower than the GE campus, and I think they're concerned about the water running to them.
Um, and I, what, where the water goes is, so after these ponds, it goes into the Mill River. So in this wood line here off on the map is the Mill River, and that's actually going in the other direction. So that's going.
It's going in the other direction.
It's going away from, from them and heading, heading towards Long Island Sound. So there's no potential for, for them to have any, any drainage impacts from this project.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I'm gonna continue on. Uh, I'm gonna maybe go a little quicker than we originally planned, because I wanna respect, uh, your timeframe. I know Bill's got some other speakers here. So, uh, a couple of fast facts about the project. Uh, sixty-seven point six acres. There are essentially three buildings on the campus. Uh, occupied space totals a little over five hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. There's about three hundred and sixty thousand square feet above the podiums or above the structured parking. That's generally, um, was the office space that was used and what the, what Sacred Heart University continues to use. Uh, we have, uh, had parking for seven hundred and seventy-six spaces. A hundred and seven of them, uh, were surface and six hundred and sixty-nine structured. Uh, the, the hockey is adding about a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, here it is, uh, the aerial view with the arena in place. Uh, and you see even the South Lobby developments rendered in here beyond the East Building. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, three, thirty thousand, six hundred and twenty-one, uh, spectators, five hundred of them, uh, in standing capacity. Uh, seven hundred and fifty-nine spaces, uh, planned, uh, after this development with six hundred and ten, uh, in the garage.
What are the, um, if I could interrupt you there for a question, what are the requirements, um, uh, for number of parking spaces? Versus how many are being provided with respect to the site and the, you know, the, all of the buildings, including the, the proposal?
Uh, Bill, so I don't have to break out of the show and, and call up that drawing to look at the, uh, the map. Do you have that handy by any chance, that number?
The number, Mr.
The number, Mr. Chairman, is one space for every five seats. It's 3621 divided by five. There's more than enough parking onsite. I don't have the comparison numbers right in front of me.
Yeah, that's 724.
So 724 required. Is that inclusive? When we talk about, I guess, I'm not being terribly articulate at the moment. There's existing parking on the site presently in the underground garages and some surface. Here, we're adding a few surface spots. Is the 759 inclusive of, that's all parking that's being provided on the site, right?
Yes.
Okay. And is the calculation of the minimum required of 724 inclusive of the existing space as well as the new arena space?
It's the new arena space.
Okay. So what's the, my question then is directed towards the gross occupied space, right? When taking into account the existing buildings and, you know, built space plus the new arena, how many parking spaces are required and how many are being provided?
These are non-same-time. Sorry, Bill.
Yeah. Why don't I look into that, Mr. Chairman? Obviously, we're going to another hearing. I'll have an answer for you next time.
Okay. I appreciate that. Sorry for the interruption. Please continue.
Okay. This section, perspective through the arena, shows the height relationship from the arena to the east building, a little more than 35 feet below the east building roof line. The east building, as a matter of relation to the west building, is about a half-story below the west building. So another nine feet above would be the west building. This, I think, is an interesting view. So this is one that we took after the leaves had fallen from the eastern turnpike. We were trying to demonstrate that the arena is not visible. This is, I think, the best view I could get to try to see the arena. And even though it's in the computer model, you're not, you can't see it from here because it is below the podium line there. So if, it would be over the grade line, be in the red ellipse. If you could climb up on top of that hill, you could see it. I mentioned the south lobby project. So the spectators do come in, they park in either the east or the west building garage. Highlighting those entrances are shown in the red ellipses. This is a rendering of the south lobby, which is, I'd say, probably 95% complete at this point. In fact, here's an interior view of the actual construction as it stands, probably a week or so ago. So very far along. The doorway is beyond about where the red cursor is, is actually where the west building parkers will come into the arena as they head down the corridor to the arena here and are joined by the east building parkers. This here is, the view on the lower right is actually the renovated corridor that's being carved out of the east building. So at this point here, these spectators are coming together from the two parking structures, heading towards the red box in the foreground here, towards the arena. The other way into the facility is, both Dan and I had mentioned, is through this pedestrian plaza and the shuttle bus drop-off, along with accessible parking to the left and some short-term parking as well. Getting you down to the eye level, you can see the pioneer sculpture marking the entrance. Lots of seating providing people for waiting outside of the pedestrian flow, heading towards the front door. And then ultimately, inside the front door. You've now entered the concourse. The door is just to the right. And you can start to see the concourse wrapping around the seating bowl. This view here is actually, you've just come out of the east parking, down the escalator, onto the same concourse level. You're now at the other side of the arena, looking towards the Merritt Parkway. And then now you've entered inside the arena from the east parking escalators. The Merritt Parkway would be out towards the left. If you could, you know, walk to the edge of the glass there, the main doors over here on the right. You move around the arena bowl, you can now start to see the upper suites, including the president's suite, some coaches' offices on the upper level. That's actually in line with the east building parking. They move you up into the suites, give you a quick view. There are two small club areas providing food and beverage. Stepping inside the president's suite here, looking down into the bowl. There's some really tremendous facilities built underground in this facility that I think deliver this sort of first-class hockey experience for the players. So you see things like the video and film room for both men's and women's varsity hockey. Athletic training and also fitness areas are located beneath grade, underneath the bowl. Players' lounges, a big recruitment feature. They mentioned there are a number of types of locker rooms. There are sort of the more standard locker areas for club and youth hockey. Obviously, the feature here, this would be representative of both men's and women's varsity lockers here. So with that, that sort of concludes our tour around the building. Bill, I'm going to turn it back to you. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Dan. Mr. Chairman, there are two, I have Mr. Galante to present, and then I need to conclude. I don't know whether eight minutes is going to work for Mike Galante.
No, that's fine. I appreciate the natural breaking point. I mean, it's, you know, eight minutes to 10. It's been a long night with all Mr. Galante. I prefer to have him come back and give us the full monkey and have your time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, I had a letter today about, apparently not directly related to this, but about screening in a backyard that's adjacent to the property for a service building. I went over there today to look at that, and I couldn't get into the campus. The security wouldn't let me in.
Well, first of all, Mr. Corcoran, we can make sure that you have access to the campus. Secondly, that's Mr. Ross, Sam Ross. I've been in contact with Mr. Ross. I can read you an email he sent back to me. "Hi, Bill. Thank you for the email and the quick response. What the university proposes to do this spring is fine with me, and you are authorized to represent that to the commission in the event that my email poses a question as to my approval for the project, which I do approve." Sam. So Mr. Ross is happy. We're going to meet with him in the spring and put in a planting plan that is mutually agreed upon.
Okay. I'm not sure that's the same name, but I'll check on it. Sounds good.
Or if there's somebody else, I'd be happy to address that as well.
And in terms of getting into the campus?
I'll make sure that the university has the name of all the commission members and alternates so that if anyone wants access to the campus, that they can do so.
Thank you.
That would be most appreciated, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll suggest that if any members of the commission like to visit the campus, to reach out to Mr. Went, and why don't you make an arrangement then with Mr. Fitzpatrick or the school, the applicant, just to coordinate something, right? And at least somebody can be there to show you where to go and, you know, that kind of thing.
Be happy to.
That's a good suggestion, Mr. Chairman, and we'd be happy to accompany any commission member that might want access if they desire, or otherwise, if you'd rather go on your own, we're happy to reach out and make that arrangement.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just received an email from university council saying with COVID restrictions, you really need to make an appointment. So we'd be happy to do that. I don't, just with COVID, you simply can't walk in.
No, that's why I'm, it's in part why I'm suggesting that anyone reach out to Mr. Went, who can coordinate on our behavs with you and the app to make sure that there is a protocol to be followed and that people are not wandering around and that sort of thing.
Gotcha.
So with that, I'm going to adjourn the hearing. Hold this public hearing open until the next regularly scheduled meeting. For members of the public, we've not closed the applicant's presentation yet. When we resume next time, they'll finish, and then we will have the opportunity for public comment. I will also reiterate that anybody can feel free to send in written comments at any time to directly into the commission email address or to the office, and they'll distribute it to us. It'll be part of our file. When is the next meeting, when is this going to be put over till?
Well, Mr. Chairman, our next regularly scheduled meeting is January the 12th. We do have the Park Avenue matter that was continued, that was put off of this date to go to January. So we'll have to get with both applicants to try to gauge what kind of timeframe we might be looking at. So it may or may not be the next meeting on January 12th. The meeting after that would be January the 26th. But I'm sure I will be having some conversations with both the Park Avenue applicant and this applicant to try to see what kind of prime budget we might want to allot, so.
All right. Well, then, when we figure that out, please just post the dates on the website.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll do.
That way, so for members of the public that are, you know, looking to track us, they're not waiting for the public notice and the like. We'll just get it out there.
Nope. Absolutely correct. We can do that.
All right. Terrific. All right, everyone. Thank you very much. Appreciate every time. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Good night.